We can all stand to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like now to open the meeting, Selectment's meeting for February 25th, 2019. First thing on the schedule is one day beer/wine license request for Becca.
She's not here yet.
Okay.
She must be running a few minutes late.
Yep, we can move it down and bring it back up. All right, public comment, anybody here for a public comment? Okay. Let's jump to reports and announcement, student liaisons, my favorite, go ahead.
All right, so at the primary school, they concluded their Yankee Candle fundraiser, and they're holding a shoe tying Olympics for all first grade classes this week. The Memorial School will be hosting a community reading event on March 6th. And congratulations to Kalen for winning, for writing the winning essay in the Saving Success Story Essay Contest sponsored by Country Bank's School Banking Program. And then both schools celebrated Valentine's Day by exchanging Valentines in their classes.
At the middle school, the Scholastic Book Fair is being held this week during the school day. Parent teacher conferences are on Thursday, February 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. At the high school, there are parent teacher conferences on Thursday, February 28th and Friday, March 1st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be a half day on Friday, March 1st for all schools due to Professional Development Day.
Thank you.
I just have a question.
Go right ahead.
The primary school, community reading, you said the 6th or is it the 5th?
I have 6th, I can double check on that, but I believe that's what it said on the calendar.
Why I'm asking is, I was invited to go and I couldn't go and they asked if I could invite one of you guys to go, if you're available for primary school. Why had not 5th? But we'll confirm if it's the 5th or 6th.
What day is it?
The 6th is a Wednesday, the 5th is a Tuesday.
So if anybody can go, I can let her know tomorrow so they'll have the sign made and et cetera, so.
Can I send you an email tomorrow?
Yeah.
When I get to work?
It is the 6th, so it is Wednesday, March 6th.
It is the 6th, thank you.
Yes.
Alyssa, you said the half day was...
What time?
Friday.
Eight forty-five, you're gonna be there for nine o'clock already.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the Select Board's report, Harry.
So I just have a few questions. David, the handicap parking for Commissioner on Disabilities for the violations that went up to $300 as opposed to $150, it's, I think it has to go down all floor from your last thing, can we make sure that that comes up?
Yes.
Because this has been five years and running and we still don't have it for Commissioner on Disabilities. I'm not blaming you, but.
Sure.
Just I don't want to forget about that. Can we also officially name the bridge, John Benender Bridge?
We're waiting, on that one, we're waiting on the family.
Okay, so.
They wanted a day, my understanding is they wanted a day that was a little more closer to spring.
So that was with me communicating with them, so it's okay to pick a date?
Yes.
And just go ahead with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just give us enough lead time, I'd say 30-day lead time, just so I can make sure all the representatives are there, make sure that they have time in their schedule.
And Rachel offered to do a coffee and afterwards, we'll talk about that as well.
Yeah.
Leicester Earth Day will be Sunday, May 5th. This is the Ashley Dage Leicester Earth Day, the same day as Burnco Cleanup, but, so it's a townwide cleanup, it is what it is. Feel free to clean up all weekend and look for updates on that. And the only other one was the community reading, which I've already asked yourself. That's all I had.
Sandy. I just wanted to acknowledge and recognize and send sympathies from the town to the families of Pete Martenson. And I hope we're not stealing your thunder, Rick. He's a former firefighter, former police officer, he was the town's first DMT, and he passed away this past week. As well as Mary Johnson passed away last weekend. She was instrumental in getting the senior center built. And a lot of the activities and things that are in the senior center are a result of her efforts, so condolences to their family as well. This past week, it seems zip code 01611 has been the hot topic on how to get a Leicester zip code for Cherry Valley. If we could look into what the process is, we tried this several many years ago and it was defeated when we still had a Cherry Valley post office, we no longer do. Those people in Cherry Valley get their mail one to two days later than everybody else. They get, they have some issues at the registry because the registry keeps trying to say you're a Worcester and you're not, and I've had several people ask, what is the process to try and get Cherry Valley into 01524?
Okay, we'll check into it.
Right, they do, they do have, because I lived in Cherry Valley, the 0, and I think it's still active, 01611, I think it is, yeah, that's, see, I got a good memory, it's been a long time. And that, that was the one with the post office. And even though the post office closed, I don't think that they can deactivate that without telling the residents of Cherry Valley.
No, that's what I'm asking, what is the process? Because I know before it had to go on the town all floor at a minimum, and I don't know what else we have to do through the post office. From what I understand, the current postmaster supports it. If we just find out the process, then I can work with you to bring it forward probably for fall town meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sandy.
That's what I had for reports.
Okay.
Yep, go right ahead.
On that, the problem with that is, okay, you get the 01611. If somebody puts 01524, okay for my address on there.
You never get.
To get sent back because there's no such address in Leicester.
Right.
All right, but it did go, like Sandy said, it did go before, meeting before, and it got voted down by the residents of Cherry Valley. They didn't want it.
That was 10 years ago, so, but I now have several asking me.
Well, it's several, but, you know, you get everybody there and they voted against it, it didn't go.
Another one, just to bring forward to the people to the side.
All right. Okay, that's all.
Go ahead, Brian.
I'm sorry, I've been out of town, so I'm out of.
Don't apologize for being in a nice warm state, never apologize for taking vacation.
I'm out of.
That's okay.
Catching up.
No, I have nothing except for I want to thank Harry and the sun for picking up papers in Cherry Valley on Saturday.
Thank you.
And I just have one thing that really affects everybody in our town, both for federal and state projects, senior center and also for, not just the senior center, but for any of the elders, for programs that they have out there, and also for other needed families and stuff, is that everybody got their census. If you could please fill them out and return them back to Deb Davis, the town clerk. It is a federal law that we have to fill them out. Otherwise, it's gonna cost money for people to go, well, use me, to my house, because I did fill, I did fill mine out. But I'll use me anyway, as an excuse. But if I didn't fill it out, then this person would have to get hired and literally come to my house, knock on my door, and we have to pay them to do that, to make sure, with a pad and a paper, to find out what your name is, you have to verify yourself, you know, and are you the only one living here? If you're not, then you have to give the rest. So if you could just fill them out and make everybody's life a little bit easier, that would be awesome. Okay, thank you.
Diane, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Patty walking in reminded me. Dog licenses are due for renewal starting Monday, starting Friday, but because the town clerk's office is closed, you can sign up online, but March 1st to June 1st is renewal time. After June 1st, there's a fee, a late fee, so get your dogs licensed.
Okay, Sandy finished off the rest of my conversation, so that takes care of that, so.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, that's okay, let's just move on to other business.
I don't see.
He's here, he's in the back.
Oh my goodness, okay, we're gonna jump back up to the first item, which is a one day beer/wine license requested, March 13th, Becca College. You have the podium.
Hi there, where are you today? This is a very simple event, it happens annually, it's roughly for about 50 to 60 people. Our students will be on break that week, so there will be no students around other than a few athletes. Normally, I do post up signage about keeping the alcohol in the local, you know, in the area of the event, and I also attend the event.
Okay, question's Harry.
Yeah, no question, just comment, I've been to it a couple of times and I've been to other ones, you do a great job at it, including the control of the alcohol.
Sandy, anything?
No.
Brian?
No.
Rick? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, BYOB permit request, Uncle Jay's Twisted Fork, 509 Stafford Street, Cherry Valley.
Are you missing it?
I may have missed an item.
Yeah, we don't have any paperwork on that, Madam Chair.
I do, I just didn't, it didn't go in the packet.
Oh, okay, I thought I meant.
It was, it's just a one-page form that they fill out with their information. Uncle Jay's Twisted Fork is requesting a BYOB license. He has one server at the restaurant who has taken their tips training. She's just waiting for the card to come with her number, and I told him, should the board approve it, we can't issue it until I have the tip certification number and expiration.
Questions from the board?
Is the name correctly, I thought it was Twisted Fork Bistro now, and not Uncle Jay's because Jay Powell doesn't own it anymore.
No, he told me the name wasn't changing, I can check with him.
Okay, I thought they dropped the Uncle Jay's and put Bistro, if they didn't, that's fine.
I can check.
So the owners wouldn't need to be tip certified?
It's only one person.
Just the server?
Just the one.
He just cooks, he doesn't do, he's the owner and he does the cooking. He doesn't do any serving of any alcohol, he's actually not in the front of the house at all. His wife does all of the front of the house, just, I guess, a small size, they don't have anyone else.
Okay.
Motion to approve pending the certificate card.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, through the chair. Once the, this person gets their tip card, I'd like them to come in so we can see who it is.
Okay.
Now, we, we okay these people for tip certification, we okay, you know, we appoint people, we don't know who they look for, who they are. I'd like to see them, and we talked about this at a previous meeting. If we're gonna appoint people, we're gonna do this, they come in so that we can see who they are. This was brought up at a previous meeting.
It's called, just so you know for your information, because I was there this weekend, Twisted Fork, French, Italian, and American Bistro. The only reason I know is this weekend they had the Harry Brooks special for breakfast. So I went and had breakfast, and it's liver, onions, eggs, and toast. And he makes an Italian toast, homemade Italian toast that was to die for. And the liver was the best I've ever had, so I really suggest going and having breakfast and have the Harry Brooks special, because it was really good.
If I may clarify, just through the chair, so they have a common victular license already, so anyone else who was applying for BYOB, we didn't have come in if they had an existing common victular license.
But how do we know who this person is that's tip certified?
But you.
It's not a liquor license, though.
But if you're bringing in your own alcohol into an establishment and they're tip certified, okay, they're responsible because you're drinking on their property. So I'd like to know who it is.
Okay.
So we should bring anybody in?
Yeah, we have brought anybody in.
But going back to previous meetings, I think about four meetings ago, we said that we're gonna bring everybody in when we make appointments and things like this, and we're not doing it.
Unless it's over.
Yeah. Go back and look at the minutes.
If I made through the chair?
Yes.
So this isn't an appointment from the board, this is giving a license.
Right.
For them to do, pay, they're paying for a license to do a BYOB license. So it's not an appointment from the board.
Right.
No, there's no point.
So I don't understand your comment, that's why I'm asking.
I wanna see the person that's tip certified, because you can go in there and you don't know who it is. And if you see somebody in there that's been drinking, that's getting too far over the edge, where's the person that's supposed to be watching it?
Gotcha.
But the ultimate, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, let me just jump in.
Okay.
Would not, the ultimate responsibility, though, would be the owner, not the staff person who's tip certified.
But if the person is tip certified, that's the person that's supposed to be responsible. Ultimately, it's the owner, but that person went through the training, so they're the ones that are supposed to be able to distinguish whether they're being impaired or not.
Okay. It's the, it's the will of the board, I mean, I.
Through the chair? So I think there must be a policy that a restaurant does through the state, like a licensing, that they would have their license of tip certified on the wall, or some kind of process that maybe we have to learn about. Because I don't, I don't think it's.
They get a card.
Right, but posted, so we know who it is. I understand what Rick's saying, I totally understand, I think you're kind of inconvenancing somebody. But somebody, on that same note, though, we had a brand-new license just at our last meeting, and she was told that she didn't have to be here. I think it's great to have the new business owners here, not only to get to us to know them, but to people outside to get to know them, as opposed to saying, you don't need to be here, you can leave. She was told that, and I told her to come back anyways, and she was told again, she, she didn't have to be here, she could leave, so she ended up leaving. But that promotes businesses, and people know that the businesses are opening by either being at the meeting or watching it on TV, so maybe in the future.
I don't know who would tell them, tell them that, because generally, as you were saying, it's a good introduction.
Oh, absolutely, no, no, she came in, she.
It was the transfer of ownership.
It was transfer of ownership, but a new business.
To Farmhouse Center, so we talked about it, and said that they didn't have to come in.
Right, and she came in and then they still, she probably didn't really want to be here.
Right.
But, but I think it's a, I think it's a nice thing when they do come in to promote themselves to
show everybody what they got, what they do, and plug them a little bit, you know.
So on, let me go back to Rick. So Kristin, you said that they get a card that they have to give to you. Rick, would it be sufficient enough for something like this for a BYOB? If we get a copy of the card, but at least we would have the name?
We do get a copy of the card because we have it here, okay, and they have to give it. But if I go in that restaurant.
Yep.
And somebody's in there drinking.
Yep.
Okay, and I don't see the person there, then, you know, why are they letting them have alcohol and the person that's tip certified is not there? Theoretically, if you're tip certified, you're supposed to have the person there at all times when there's alcohol being consumed.
Well, that's a stipulation in their licensing, they have to have a tip certified person in order to do it, right? But wouldn't that, I'm sorry, through the chair. Wouldn't that be through the police officer to.
The police?
Warrant that?
Yes.
I mean, you know, I'm.
They, they check at the restaurant to make sure that there's tip certification. That, that's part of what they do, you know, whenever they get any reports. It's just, I'm just trying to bridge this, because the owner has full responsibility of the restaurant. They're going to have servers, one, maybe one, maybe two, maybe three, depending on how big the business is and how often they run. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to determine what, you know, what the board's pleasure is on, on that. Do you want the owner to here? Do you want the owner and servers? Do you want everybody here? I don't know, I'm just, that's what I'm asking.
Well, you know what Rick wants, I feel that, you know, we gotta be more business friendly, and I think it's kind of inconvenancing a particular person if they come into a meeting when we have no control over it, other than giving them a license to help their business a little bit. So it's up to the cops, their insurance, and their liability, so that's how I feel.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Theoretically, we do have control over it, because if there's a violation, we can pull the license. So we have control.
But we're not the.
We have the ultimate control.
We're not the police officers going in there to say, is that you, or is that, we have no control over doing that.
But the thing is, Harry, you go in there, if you see the person there, if the person, if there's no person that's tip certified there and they're drinking alcohol on the premises, is it legal or illegal?
It sounds like it's illegal, but I don't think.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't think I'm a police officer that can give them a fine for that, is what I'm saying. So that's why I don't think it's up to us.
Right, and if I saw an issue, I would just bring it up to the person and say, who's in charge? And who's the tip certified? That's what I would do personally.
But if we see the person that's tip certified, then we know who it is and we don't have to ask questions. But that's all right.
I hear what you're saying.
Do what you want, I mean, I don't.
But to that point, though, Rick, next year, there'll be someone else and they won't know, because we're not gonna bring them in for renewals.
Or are we?
150 licenses, I'd have to review for renewals.
Yeah.
Tip certification, we have how many, four, five?
Right now, we have five, I believe.
For BYOB.
For BYOB.
Because we don't bring in the liquor store owners, we don't bring in the restaurant owners, with the bartenders, except for new things and management changes.
And they do change from year to year, so every year, when we do renewals, they have to fill out a new form with all of their servers and provide their tips numbers and their expiration dates.
I'm sort of leaning towards, Harry, for BYOB, it's kind of overkill, but for manager changes, we've always had the people come in for manager changes for the liquor licenses.
Yeah, they have to.
Yep, they're required.
Okay, are we set with this?
I don't think we have a decision.
Yeah, motion and a second, so you give a vote.
Oh, you have to do that first, approve it.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. For BYOB permit request. For Jay's Twisted Fork.
French, Italian, American Bistro.
Thank you, Harry, we like that. Any more discussion on the BYOB permit request? Not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose? None? One abstention. Okay.
Go back to three C.
Next. Next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Not a lot, not a lot on it this week. Two meetings, Library Building Committee and MSBA Middle School Kickoff Meeting. The FY 2020 Budget, still under final review. I've already mapped the free cash usage for May Town Meeting. There's not a lot there, as we've, we've talked about. You have a two-page Highway Prop 2.5 presentation in your folder. That, that was worked on last week. This is the Chapel Street Mill with the fire inspector. We went over what is required for them to be able to have additional tenants in there as time goes on. We also checked out the house on, the Hillcrest House, next to the golf, next to the golf course. At some point, we are going to definitely have to bring that building down. It's not salvageable in its current condition. It's, it's open to the weather, has been for a fairly long period of time, and water's been diverted throughout the building. I mean, the board purchased it for the frontage as it was. It'll be fine for frontage, but at some point, we will have to tear it down.
Through the chair.
Yes.
On that, have we looked at soliciting bids for? Do I do it sooner than later?
Yeah, right now, we, right now, we're getting bids on the remediation, because you've gotta, you've gotta remove all the hazardous materials first. So we've started on that. I'm likely not to be able to get to that building until, we probably will not be able to get to it till the fall, because there won't be any cash available to pull it down till the fall.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Have you reached out to the fire and ambulance department to see if they could do any training in there before it's torn down, if it's of any value for training?
We, we have discussed it briefly, but before we do anything, we gotta do the remediation. But the condition of the building is likely that it is too unsafe for virtually anything, the floors. The floors are problematic, you name it, it's full of issues. So that, there's not much you can really deal with it at this particular point. The Hillcrest lease RFP is just about done. I need probably another day on it, and that'll be going out. It is set up as an RFP, not an IFB, so it looks at creative uses and grades accordingly. It is not, unlike the one that we, that was done, I think, five years ago now, this one's very similar, but because I've been approached by at least one group who's interested in potential other uses, the RFP is kind of written to allow them to put something in there as an alternate use or as an operating golf course. But either way, it's in there, so it allows a lot of different groups to put, put something forward, but remembering it has to be, the course has to be used for outdoor recreation, so you're not changing its use at all, but, you know, if you want to use it for other purposes, the RFP will let you submit a proposal. So that will be, like I said, that should probably be done late this week, and then we'll be putting it out, and we'll see what the interest is. So that's just about complete. And finally, I just, we spent a lot of time working on a disability retirement, retirement filing that was time-sensitive, so that's now complete.
Yes.
David, with the RFP on the Hillcrest land. Are you including that property, the house we just talked about?
Not for use as a house.
No, but as use of the property.
Uh, yes.
Does that extend, that expands that footprint?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else for David? Okay, all right, Dave, thanks.
Sure.
Back to other business, Reserve Fund Transfer Request, Unemployment Compensation, David?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was, this Reserve Fund Transfer Request was approved two weeks ago by Finance Advisory. This is the second transfer for unemployment that we've, we've asked and received from Finance Advisory. We are looking for $9,515. This will bring the reserve fund down to $20,485. It's, it's our goal at Springtown Meeting to replenish the reserve fund, so it will have its opening balance going into, into May and June. Of course, like the best late plans, I got word late last week that we had yet another filing that's not included in this, so this will wind up being not sufficient. But I don't know what the full exposure of that claim is yet, but we will find that out in, you know, depending, I'm gonna, I'm hopeful that we can nurse, nurse along this account until town needing, because I really just don't want to do another Reserve Fund Transfer at this point, but we'll have to see how it goes.
Okay.
Motion to have the chair sign.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Done, thank you. Summer Concert Series requesting a place, to place a portable bathroom at the Town Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair, you have a, you have an email in your packet from Judy Ival, making the official request for the Select Board to place two portable toilets outside of Town Hall for July and August for concert goers during the summer series.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
I have discussion, through the chair. Again, we have a Town Hall, we have bathrooms in a Town Hall, we have handicap accessibility in the Town Hall, and if the bathrooms get dirty, they get cleaned, so I don't know why we're putting outhouses outside. I said it last year, and I'm gonna say it again this year. We have a Town Hall that we all own, that we can all use the bathrooms, we can all flush the toilets. We don't need to see two porta-potties outside the Town Hall all summer again when we have the availability of having bathrooms.
Thank you, Harry.
I agree with Harry, but the people that let their kids go into the bathrooms by themselves and take the total paper off and put the whole roll in the toilet and stuff like that, they're unpoliced. So I totally agree with the porta-potties.
So, I totally agree with the porta potties.
If we're, if we're gonna release the concert series people from having to monitor the bathrooms, then I agree with Harry, but if we're gonna say they have to have someone down there all the time watching when they need those people up doing what they normally do on the common during the concerts, and that staff has gotten much smaller, um, then, I mean, that was their reasoning last time for why they really wanted the porta potties was they didn't have to put someone in the building to make sure that damage wasn't done, because we did have two summers, one summer was, it turned out it was someone who had, just had an accident, but the second summer, there was malicious mischief done. But that was only two summers out of twenty-eight, so, but it happened to be the most recent ones, so.
It's part of doing business of having bathrooms, we have a custodial service, I don't care if they complain or not, it's their job to clean up what the mess is, and that seemed like it was the issue, so I'm not claiming constant on the common in any way, um, I think us as a town needs to have the bathroom, if it gets dirty, we have to clean it, it should be open for the public. There were some issues last summer with a woman that was very sick, and she had to use the inside bathroom, and somebody phoned me and I forgot who it was.
It was me.
And I got to pee and I was able to bring her in here, because she had to, had to use a real bathroom, but I think it should be open whenever anything happened on town hall. Any kind of function on town hall that's a town function, our building should be open, town hall, it's all ours.
Anything else?
Well, David has.
David, I'll go to him.
Uh, just a reminder. Unfortunately, the Architectural Access Board does not allow the front steps to be used, so anybody with, who needs, who needs accessibility into the building will have to go over onto the side to do the elevators. So, that's the only point to it, it's just, it's not conveni-, the building's not convenient, unfortunately, as, as where the common is, and if this is, if the board wants to do this, we just have to make sure people understand how to get there, because it's not.
We can have arrows.
You know.
Instead of having them go all that way, couldn't they all just come through the ramp?
That's being taken, this one?
The ramp right up here, and go to the first floor and take the elevator down?
They could.
With the chain, it's a long, if, if they're in a wheelchair, but if they're walking, they could just walk through the gym and down the stairs.
But they can also use the front stairs if they want to, correct?
That door's supposed to be locked at all times.
But it's not, it's open every day, isn't it?
It's not supposed to be. That's.
I thought we could still use that, so we're gonna get that clarified, I guess.
We'll clarify that, but the Architectural Access Board said, you can't, you can't use that, it's not handicap accessible, but let us double check on that and.
We need that for town meeting, in elections.
I was gonna say.
What I would like to do is if we could, I don't know if it'd be the next meeting, because it's early enough, but if we could, so they didn't waste the money on porta potties as well. If there's a way that we can make it work, I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with me as far as it goes, but if we can make these bathrooms work, so I don't have to waste the money, and the town hall is open, um, I think we should be able to give them that option if everybody agrees. Again, without them policing it, as Sandy was saying, I gotta stress that, right?
Right.
Okay, so I have a first, I have a second.
Okay, it, and to Harry's point, I'll withdraw my motion until a later date.
Thank you. Who did the second? Okay, so, David, you're gonna put this on another, at our next meeting? Thank you, Sandy, for made the motion, because I knew what Harry was gonna say, and I want further discussions, so. That's fine.
You remember it.
Oh, yeah. Next on the agenda, flag, flag flying at half-staffed police requests for the police department.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, this is really, and unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to really do a lot of work on this. This was an afterthought, because I sent an email out to the board, um, as, as we mentioned earlier today, uh, earlier in the meeting, we had a former longtime, you know, employee of both police and fire who passed, his family had requested that the half-staffed flag, uh, the half-staff be implemented, uh, yesterday on Sunday, which it was, obviously, there's no time for approval in a case like that. And, you know, my question for the board, because, just because I haven't had a chance to get through all the policy manuals, I don't know if we currently have a half-staffed policy that's in place, but, um, basically, basically, the code, code allows that local officials, officials can make decisions on flying flags at half-staff. I just don't know, I'm assuming at the moment, we don't have one, and when you look at the timing of such requests, you, you know, if we're in between board meetings, there's no opportunity to get them on board meetings, so I wanted to, to discuss with the board as to what you would be looking for in doing this going forward. I mean, we obviously could not do anything with this, this particular request, they flew at half-staff yesterday for police and fire.
Okay, so we have been doing this for many, many, many years, even, um, for one of our former, all the selectmen as far as I can remember, but one of our former selectmen, that passed a few years ago, we did the same thing, we, okay, and, um, do we really need a policy in place for that? I mean, we haven't had one, we do have as a select board the right to turn around and say, no, we want the flag at half-mast, okay? If we had a policy put in place, would that mean that the board would have to take a vote, and if the board took a vote and I drop dead, and I'm getting buried two days later, because I'm ninety-nine years old, or even the next day, how is, and I'm not saying this board here, but the, the future boards, how are they gonna get together on one day notice? So if we have, if we have a policy, would it be open-ended? I don't know. I don't even know if we need one, go ahead, Harry.
Last year, when Selectman had passed away, we all got a phone call, that's how I got it, and said, would like to do that, and it was like, absolutely.
Absolutely.
This past practice has been that the and that becomes policy by default usually, right? The town administrator would poll the board individually by phone or individually by email, text, to see if they opposed it, and if no one opposed, then the town administrator just authorized it. And a lot of times, it's not just the police or the fire department, it's the town hall flag right out here on the corner. So, I think, if we have to have a policy that just documents that it's a polling of the board, I think that's the easiest way to solve it.
I would have liked to have seen all the flags through the town and not just the police department, because he was part of the fire department.
The fire department, who would have that.
It would be like a, oh, they did, okay, and the town did?
No, no.
No.
So, it should be everybody, it should be the entire town when, when it does, when we do do it, my opinion.
So that means Dennis's crew has to lower the flag and raise it on the particular days.
I'll be more than happy to raise it and lower it as well, so.
Well, if it's you, Harry.
Yep.
I thought you might get assassinated today.
Well, I know you don't have to.
All right. Uh, I, I will put together a very quick policy that says the board will, will be polled by email, and it basically.
Or by phone, in case you can't reach them.
But we make emails faster, you know, they will, the board will be contacted, and if there is, if there is no, if there, as long as there, there is no comment or objection, we will fly the flag at, at the time requested by the family, but that way, the board gets the notification of who it is, so you're aware that a request was made, and at the same, and at the same time, we don't have to really, you know, it's very automatic at that point, so if that works for everybody, I'll put together a very quick policy on that.
Okay.
I was going with all town flags.
Yep. All.
All town flags.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't usually include schools.
Right.
They have their own policy for their properties.
Yep.
So do we need a motion on that, if he's gonna write it up?
He gets a direction for him to write it, and we vote the policy after two readings.
After, we get, we get it, the first, okay, so if we have a meeting next week, we get the, of the draft of the policy, and if we agree on it, then the following meeting that we have, then we vote on it. Okay? Okay, next on our agenda, dissolve Burnco Park Reuse Subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, there is a notation, you know, in, uh, an email in your packet showing that the Burnco Park Reuse Committee has chosen to disband after finalizing the land use management plan within the subcommittee. Motion to disband.
Second.
Any discussion? You guys did a great job, I just wanna let people know that when we have subcommittees, that they do more than some of the regular committees that we have, because you set up for that type of a task, so I just wanna say it was a great job. Any other comments? Not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Burnco Park Sports Planning Committee revised charge, add two members, which would be the snowmobile and the Burnco Water District.
That's spelt.
Watershed.
Watershed District, yeah, watershed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that is also included in the same email that was sent out, um, a request for a larger Burnco Sports Park, Park Planning Committee.
Yep.
With two mem-, two additional members to the group, uh, one from the snowmobile club and one from the water district.
How many do we have now?
Seven.
Seven on that?
Seven, we're going to, they would like to go to nine.
Would you like to know why you have this discussion?
Sure.
Now, you're kinda hooked, so, um, because there's so much involved with going on with the park, and maybe Don can add to it, I should like to, Don's here as well, to get more representation out of it from the, so Rose has been on it for at least a year now, but unofficially, from the Water District, Burnco Water District, um, Watershed Association, what's the actual acronym for that?
Burnco Pond Watershed District.
BPWSD, so, um, so she will be a voting member to have the interest of the Burnco Pond people that live on the lake, the residents of Burnco Pond. So, we wanted to do that, along with the snowmobile club, because they use it as well, to get two new looks in, look at what we're actually doing, and get their input, and get their approval, so we can all work together.
Okay, so is Rose on this committee now?
She's applied, so she was unofficially on the committee for the last year, and listening to the meetings and bringing stuff back to her water group.
But not a voting.
But not a voting member until hopefully after tonight.
I can speak a little bit if you want me to.
Hang, hang on one sec, then, but, so if we accept a two more person board to this, wouldn't we open it up for people to apply?
Well, so, with, with our group asking, we wanted one from each group, both groups gave them the, they're the liaisons. So, snowmobile group picked Mr. True, and the Burnco picked Rose to be their people, so nobody else from their group applied for it at that point.
Right, those are the.
But they can't apply, because we don't have.
Usually, when we name a particular group to be a part, that group names their liaison, their member, just like when we do others and we say from Finance Advisory, we don't pick who from Finance Advisory, Finance Advisory tells us who they're sending, so this would be the same thing when you name a particular group. This group has at-large members on it already from the town.
Okay. As you see here, we have some commission needing five people, you know, of these other boards, that'd be nine-person committees.
We need five to make a quorum, and we need that, a lot of discussion went into it.
Okay.
Can I just make a quick comment? I'm, I'm Don Martilla, I was actually the chair of the, um, the reused subcommittee, and Rose was actually part of that committee, so she has been with us, she has created the land use management plan, she's, she's been a great liaison between the water district, which is an important part of Burnco moving forward, um, and understanding their, their um, concerns and their interests, uh, being residents of the park, of the watershed as well, of the pond, um, and the snowmobile club has been, they've been the most active down there, and they've probably kept all the trails going, uh, since the town has not, so they have been a crucial part of the activity at Burnco, and so we would like to invite them to be a part of the discussion for Burnco Park moving forward.
They end up cleaning up as well, every time we have cleanup, they're all there cutting, working.
They are always there.
So out of those seven people, none of them were ever from those two?
No. Any other discussion? I have a motion?
I, I, motion, so move.
Second.
Any other discussion anywhere? Not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just through the chair, David, we have the applications, but we don't see them here, are we voting on that?
Um.
Because it is part of the Burnco.
You have one in there, you have John Trous, and we gave you Rose.
Yep, that was a separate.
Because we actually had that, we actually have Rose scheduled for the next meeting, because normally, you know, what, once you get back into practice, is normally you would vote to expand the group and then appoint at the following meeting after we.
So we're gonna wait on both of them for the next meeting, is what you want?
Um, I think, it's, it's more typical of what we do, and if it's not, if it's not something that is an inconvenience to Burnco, the Burnco Committee.
I'm good with it, I guess.
I think, you know, we just do it the way we usually do, so, thank you.
Okay. Establish Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, there is a memo in your packet, um, that talks about the establishment of the Public Safety Committee. I found these committees to be very, uh, useful in previous employment. Basically, what, what it winds up being is the Public Safety Committee is made up, more or less, of department heads, town administrator, school superintendent, police chief, fire chief, EMS director, highway superintendent, um, or their designees, and generally, what the, what the, the committee does is the committee has open public meetings, most of the time during the day, but if somebody has, for instance, a road complaint, or, you know, the stuff that the board deals with all the time, um, with issues having to do with safety, they go before the Public Safety Committee, the committee reviews their complaint or request, uh, and then brings it to the board for action with a recommendation. What, what's hap-, what happens now is, you'll, you may have somebody who actually comes to, comes to the meeting and re-, and has a complaint, it becomes an agenda item that's done further down the road, if we get everybody together, and eventually, we get something back to you. This basically starts it with public safety, we bring it up, there's, there's a board chair of that group, uh, there's minutes taken and all the rest of it, that's brought forward to the board with recommendations on any particular item. The other thing, the other thing that public safety does, aside from that, is they're, they're also very involved in the planning of public events to make sure, you know, for safety and security, that, you know, particular events are set up, so it, it, it works out best for the public, and where, and we're putting that, we're putting an actual action plan together. So a couple of, a couple of the things that I put in there, just as a possibility to talk about, uh, looking at some of the groups would be, like, for instance, uh, Public Safety Day, which is gonna be an annual event now, how we set up, up where we do it, et cetera, and the tree lighting. So, basically, what it does is it provides safety planning for town and school events, recommends policy and bi law changes, partici-, per, pardon, pertaining to issues of public safety, so, you know, obviously, we'll look, work with other interested parties or groups, we'll plan dates, times, and activities of town events, such as street lighting and Public Safety Day, review parade routes, respond to road complaints, and make specific recommendations to the select board regarding, regarding signage, traffic improvements, and speed limits. So it puts it in a group setting where we all talk about it, and then we put, put something forward to the board.
Comments from the board, Harry?
No, I have nothing.
Sandy? Brian? Brick? You need a motion for this?
Uh, yes, please, I need a committee.
I'll indicate a motion.
So I'm out.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we will actually be giving you a list of appointments at the next meeting.
Okay. Next on the agenda, board and committee appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Did I say all those in favor? Yeah. Go ahead.
What you, you have a number of citizen volunteer forms within the packet this evening.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this kind of dovetails back with a discussion that we had at the last select board meeting. And as we know, the discussion, the discussion that we had at that particular point would be that somebody would apply to be on a particular board or committee. Kristin would then note the date and time that that came in forward onto the board committee for response. And then, and understanding that the board is the ultimate appointing authority. So we felt that, you know, in light of the fact that we clarified that policy a little bit at the last meeting, that we would, we would give you the list of people, aside from the ones we discussed at the last meeting, that had applied for boards and committees and to our understanding have never been contacted. And these, I mean, some of these are stale and they may not even, you know, there, there may or may not be even vacancies available for them at this particular point. But we thought that it made sense, it would make sense to give you the listing of, for lack of a better word, default bypasses that we, that we, that we're still holding on to and use that as a way of discussing again, what do you do in a situation if somebody submits a talent bank form and/or volunteer form and they, they want to be on a board or committee and for whatever reason, that board or committee does not get back? The question is, who, you know, does the board wish to then still appoint that, that individual? Or not? Or what other action do you want to see? Because, you know, the problem is, we dealt with a couple just because those, that one committee is also, also works with an employee. We've got plenty of boards and committees that don't have any town hall liaison. So my question is, what does the board want to do in a case like that?
Rick, I'll start with you this time. Pass. Brian?
Well, I mean, looking through some of these old ones, I mean, I'm looking here, commission disabilities has five positions. And there's three sitting here that no one ever touched on.
I can answer that for you.
Please.
So the chairman had left. We don't have a new chairman and we haven't had a meeting since these applications, but we need to have it, we need to put who's there together to do it. So we're at fault for that. You know, I present fault for that.
Do you have even a quorum?
Yes. We have just a quorum. There was no vice chair. It was just a chairman. It was just put on my lap because I'm a selectman, but I'm not the vice chair or the chairman.
Had you ever seen or heard that there were people working it on that?
I knew Alice, yeah. I knew a couple of these that were applying.
So.
And we've talked back and forth as well, so they know I still had them. One of them in there who I know really well didn't know she applied. Well, we haven't gotten them in the past, so they would go right to COD and we didn't have a meeting, so I didn't, didn't need to get them because she didn't, where's she going to send them? The chairman, you know?
Right.
So these are a year old?
Well, actually.
What I do is I send them to everybody on the committee if I don't have a chair.
So last year at this time, there was a chair?
No.
No, he's been out.
He's been out that long?
Yep.
Where, where do you see in the date?
Seeing there are.
Well, it's not a year there either though. That's, so.
Well, it's, it's a year today.
I know, I know.
That one's a year today and that one's eleven months.
Maybe the year before even. We don't know that. There's no year there. So I have a comment with that.
There's no, no year on a lot of these. It's just month and day.
They're all a chair.
They're all eighteen.
What, what's stopping us from getting these dates stamped in the clerk's office so we know exactly when they come in?
We can get them based down.
They have a date on, because we use similar stocks on the last page, the date that they sign is the date they're submitted and they come through. That's the date that I forwarded, I sent it on to the committee.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Yep.
And it, and it's, this is really, this is not about, you know, saying anything about any particular.
Right, right.
It really just comes down, you know, it comes down to, you get something in and if for whatever reason there's no response, what, where do we go from there? And, you know, you could, it could be, I suppose theoretically it could be, it could depend on the situation with every particular board or committee. But it's still, we don't want to be in a position where we're discovering, where we're discouraging people to volunteer.
Absolutely.
What I personally think is, if you've got a board of five and you need three people on that board or just one, and you give it to COD saying COD did not do anything with it, didn't answer within a meeting, then it should go to the select board and the select board, the appointing power should either appoint or not. That's how I think it should go. Maybe two meetings, I don't know. But, I mean, that's a lot more work for you probably in the office to know when somebody has a meeting or something like that. But if we are waiting for a committee or a board to appoint somebody and they just ignore it, it needs to come to us because we're the appointing power, so we should either appoint them or not. Ask them to come in as Rick said, on a particular agenda item and we get to meet them and then say aye and aye.
So if I may through the chair, there was one application that I received since the last meeting. And based on the conversations we had, what I did was I forwarded it, it actually was a committee that had a staff person associated with it. So I forwarded it to that staff person and I said, please have this on the next agenda. And I gave them a month out so that they would have sufficient time to meet. And I said, you know, if we don't, we'd like a recommendation back. If we don't hear back, this will be on the last board meeting in March.
I like that idea.
Hey, alright, so, but our liaison appointments to covering a hundred percent of these boards, ninety percent?
Eighty.
So.
We have so many.
No, because some of them we're on, so we're not even liaisons. Like you're.
I'm on COD, I'm not a liaison.
But I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we don't have liaisons to most of these.
No.
If we're on them or sitting with them, should we also get a copy of these?
Well, as a selectman.
Hey, I went to the meeting. By the way, you guys all get this. We got it, you know, the select board got it. Did you guys get this?
And I believe at the last meeting we talked about, we are going to get all of them, right? So we are going to get them all. So, you weren't here. So we talked about getting them all.
Sorry.
You were on vacay. We forgive you. Glad you had a good time.
Alright, so.
Personally, I think what Kristin said, given that month, the notice and the month notice, and then if nothing's done, it comes back to us, then we decide what we're going to do. And if they are on our agenda, you can ask them to come in as we've talked about for.
Yeah, I think they have to come in, especially when they check off more than one committee.
They tell us what they really want.
Tell us what they really want and why they want to be on it, which is what they would do if they went to a meeting of that particular board.
Correct.
But if they mark two and there's two openings, there's nothing stopping us from allowing them to do one both, like.
As long as we know they don't conflict all the time, right?
Right, except for finance advisory.
Right, they can only do one. You know, like, one of these says they want to be on finance advisory, but they're not available on Monday night. So that means he's not a good candidate for finance advisory because they meet on Mondays. But I think what Kristin's doing is what we should try for a few months and see how it works.
Absolutely.
For these that are all from last year.
Could, could we do that from these from last year? Like give them a month?
Or have Kristin recheck that they're really still interested and have it on the next agenda?
And check with the boards and see if the boards are going to put them on and give them that month, that one month notice. If they don't put them on and they have an opening, then we can do it.
And if, if I may through the chair, if you're okay with a little bit of flexibility, like the example that I just gave you, their next meeting was like the day after the board meeting I was scheduled to put them on. So they said, can we bump it out two more weeks? I think as long as there's communication, if you guys are okay with that, we'll just get them on your agenda as soon as possible.
Four, four to eight weeks is appropriate. A year, isn't it? And it's not your fault. I don't mean it. Blaming, I don't mean blaming your office.
I bet you're not a wife and mother, so it can't be.
Any other discussion on this? Okay. Next on the agenda, open annual town meeting warrant and set close date for filing of warrant articles, March 21st, 2019. You're up, David.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is what it is. It's that time, it's that time of year. So I'm looking for, for the board to officially open the annual town meeting and set the close date for March 21st, 2019. That will be within the forty-five day window required by the bylaws for any bylaw, for any, any bylaw changes to be submitted, to be put in front of the board.
Motion?
Got a motion? Got a second? Any discussion from the board? Not hearing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does the motion have to include the close date?
Yes.
With the close date, March 21st, 2019.
Five P.M.?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, FY 2020 budget review and proposed Prop. Two and a half override discussion and/or vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, let's, let's do one at a time. The budget review, the budget really has not moved all that much. I've got one thing left to check into. I think just based on the number of reserve fund transfers we've been dealing with, I'm probably going to shift a little bit of money from the employee health and, employee health insurance and benefits line to the unemployment account. I think this year it'll be a little different than last year, but based on the fact that we've done due reserve fund transfers thus far, I'm not really looking forward to doing that again. So I think overall, the department heads have not come forward with any particular complaints or concerns about their budgets aside from the fact that there's certainly plenty that would like to have more money available. But there's nothing there that we're seeing is an issue. I will remind you, however, and this is something that we have a little further on down the line for discussion tonight. The current budget as it's set up, I do, I do not have utilities for one Paxton Street in there at all. Also, another item we're going to discuss later on tonight, I do not have anything currently for the memorial school either. But we will get to those as we discuss them. So that's pretty much the budget. Like I said, I expect to see basically two numbers change by the time we get to the final.
Alright, and before you get to the proposition two and a half, I just want to remind everybody, and I know this is a hot button and I appreciate everybody coming out, I really do. But first we'll have the discussion from the board and then any of yous who wants to have a discussion, you need to state your name and your address like every other meeting, nothing's different, and go up to the podium so everybody can hear you. Is that okay? Okay. Go ahead, David.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a, there is a memorandum in your packet that pretty much just breaks it down. I thought it would make a little sense to just almost make a fact sheet, for lack of a better word. So the way it's set up is, the request is for $350,000. I went, I went to the actual cost first. It's thirty-four cents per thousand dollar valuation based on FY 19 valuations. So on the, on a home value at $250,000, that cost would be $85 per year. The reason for the request is basically, as you're well aware, the current FY 2020 budget is not allowing for highway or any other positions to be funded. And I can't see, looking at the volume of work that, that we are looking to be able to do incrementally speaking. If you do a position a year, even if, once we get there, it's going to take a number of years to build that department up to where it needs to be. So at this particular point, I thought it would make sense to bring it forward to the board, keep it, keep it at a minimal cost as best we can to allow for the work to be done and not, not to have it be as detrimental on, on the taxpayers, we could avoid. So that's why, I mean, most, most of the time when you see override requests, generally in my experience, towns will, will basically go through all the departments. It'll be a million dollar override because you're trying to solve all of the budget problems in wealth, one fell swoop. As we all know, based on budget discussions that we've had, looking at where the school is, looking at personnel shortages for the new library, there's plenty more that could be added on to this. But, you know, the school, the school has made the choice that they are not going to, not going to do it. And with the other departments, I can't see doing a multipurpose override and growing this number anymore beyond the minimum. So before we start getting into the use of funds and all the rest of that, one thing I want to make clear because I have, I have heard quite a bit of comments and discussions about what happened in 2013. And that was when a larger override was put forward. And basically, if that override didn't get passed, you know, buildings were going to be closed. All sorts of things were going to happen should the override not be approved. We're not saying that. What this, what this override seeks to do is, is as I said, in a modest way, it seeks to increase services that can be provided by the highway department. If it's voted down, the services will remain at what they are. That's what it is. We'd like to make it better. We would like to make improvements. We would like to be able to do additional building maintenance that we currently cannot do. But that's all it is. And if, for whatever reason, it's turned down or it doesn't, it doesn't go on, go on the ballot, it's status quo. So I don't want to, I, I can't put it any other way. So the use of the funds basically is, is putting in four highway frontline positions, which will bring the frontline staff to eleven. There's currently seven. One position is basically vacant at the moment, but cannot be filled for the time being. So you're talking three equipment operators slash truck drivers at $52,000 each for $156,000. One foreman at $60,000. And this, this next one is, this one isn't quite fleshed out, whether it be contracted custodial services or whether or not it be done with additional part-time staff. I actually have to meet with NFP, which is the, the service that is providing school services tomorrow, just to get an estimate on that. I've got it pegged at $70,000. And then supplies miscellaneous professional services at 64. Now, what the supplies and miscellaneous professional are, looking at, for instance, this particular building, we need, we, we need to do repairs to the facade of the building. That's where supplies come in so you can actually buy materials to do these improvements throughout the building. Lower level stuff, like, you know, one of the things we're looking at, for instance, is when it comes to ADA compliance, all of these fire doors with the glass that are in, is in them now have got to be upgraded and changed. That would be a maintenance item that would be going through this. That wouldn't be a capital budget transfer item like we would normally do. So what it allows, it allows us to actually make repairs as we go through the year without need, without needing town meeting to fund 10,000 for this or 5,000 for that. It gives, it actually creates an operating fund of maintenance. That's what that's for. And so when you add all of those up, it comes, it comes up to the 350,000. What you get out of it, and Dennis is here and he could certainly answer, answer any questions. But what you wind up with is you wind up with a permanent allocation of staff for municipal buildings and grounds maintenance. So the way we envision it, looking at the staffing line, you would have people who are, who are basically doing a lot of the building and grounds work and then you'd have the, you'd have the people who are doing the highway work. Depending on the work, yeah, they could certainly switch back and forth. At some point, you might have more on buildings and grounds on a particular day or other days for highway. But you basically, we would be looking at, at two groups, groups doing specific work. What, what we would also allow for snow, snow and ice removal services for all municipal and school buildings. So currently, as it's set up, school has a, has a contractor who is doing the, doing the snow and ice at the schools. PED is doing their, doing their own removal. Highway is doing the rest, rest of the other buildings and parking lots. We would be taking all of that over when it comes to the snow and ice during the storms. You know, so there, the, there wouldn't be any more contractor contracts unless we, we felt we had to have one or two on the side in case we needed them. But generally speaking, the highway, highway would be taking care of all of that. It would also allow for mowing, seeding and aeration, and aeration of the municipal and school fields. It would also allow for mowing, seeding and aeration, and aeration of the municipal and school fields. So highway currently is taking care of all of, all of the town parks and town fields. This would allow them to do town and school fields, and keep them up, and, and hopefully improve them over time. Additional time for roadside mowing and tree trimming. We've got a lot of that to do in town. Thankfully, we got some new equipment that'll make it a little bit easier. But most of the complaints that we, that we see when it comes to intersections and traffic concerns, a lot of it has to do with overgrowth. So we'd be able to keep that up a little bit more. We have to meet stormwater maintenance regulations that are due in twenty twenty one, including biannual street sweeping and yearly catch basin maintenance. Where we're not doing as much as we need to on that, and, you know, this stormwater in M S four has been a long discussion, but we're coming to the point now where we are going to be required to do additional work. We don't, don't have the staff for that currently. So as I mentioned earlier, that sixty four thousand would create a supplies and services budget to fund buildings and grounds maintenance. Either way, whether it's contract services or other, other part-time employees, we would, it would allow for all the municipal buildings to be cleaned on a regular basis. And again, emphasis here is on municipal buildings. Our work for the schools basically stops at the building perimeter. So we're not doing any school building maintenance, that's, that's too big for this. This would be all of the municipal buildings and all, and all town and school fields. But basically, when it comes to the schools, the benefits are on the outside of the buildings, not the inside of the buildings. So, you know, the implementation of a, of custodial service or staff would allow full-time, the full-time custodian position that we have now to be switched over to buildings and ground maintenance, which will open funding for additional townwide fleet maintenance. Highway basically does the majority of the vehicles in town, with the exception of the larger apparatus coming out of fires and fire department. They needed some assistance there, just because it's a big department. It's, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work for basically one mechanic currently. Currently, departmental budgets are paying for custodial or grounds and building maintenance costs. You know, any, like, for instance, the senior center, or the library, or the police station, if they need maintenance on their, their building, they're not paying that out of any town building account, they're paying it out of theirs. That would centralize within this department. So there would be savings to the, the department budgets there. And as we all know, basically, if, at least for the past two years, or the past two budgets, we've made small adjustments for non-union personnel, but aside from that, the departments have been level funded. So what, what's happening is, they've got union salary increases that are going up, and they have to take it from somewhere, and it's coming out of maintenance, because that's the first, that's the first line of defense all the time. So, um, and of course, you know, the school budget would see savings for, on the snow removal side, in the athletic fields maintenance. And we'd be doing, you know, what we're, we're more equipped to do. So what's not included in this override, we've already gone over this, but I want to make sure, make it very, very clear, school custodial services, not a part of this. School building maintenance, not a part of this. And if you get into, you know, larger scale municipal projects for buildings and grounds, you know, like building renovation, or roof projects, or, you know, full A D A accessibility like we just did, obviously, that budget's not gonna handle that. What it's designed to do, it's, it's designed to allow us to maintain the buildings, do our, do painting, you know, put together supply rooms, do that basic construction. The, you know, and the other part of that professional services budget is right, is right now, again, if the department needs to call in electrician, they're paying for it. The whole goal is to centralize that into one service, service department. So, um, one of the things that I didn't want to look at, and I want, and this is, I'm saying this just for data purposes more than anything else, is I just, I wanted to do a little looking at where we are, where we were financially, and this is, this just has to do with the town's tax burdens, et cetera. So what I did is, I went onto the Division of Local Services website. They have, they have all their tax information as of F Y two thousand seventeen. So the average, the average single family back then, in seventeen, a year and a half ago, or two years now, was three thousand three forty six, or two ninety out of three fifty one. I then took that list, and I went to basically, basically Central Massachusetts. I guess, I took, so when I brought that down, we had sixty seven communities. The Worcester Regional Average is four thousand nine eighty six. As I said, we were at three thousand three forty six. So that was a rank of fifty nine out of the six, out of sixty seven. Out of that, out of that grouping, from sixty to sixty seven, in order, you have Northbrook Field, Warren, Templeton, Wales, Winchton, Spencer, Athol, and Dudley, that as of two thousand seventeen were lower than we were. Everybody else on an average tax bill is higher. And finally, highway spending is forty two percent less than similar towns, or three, or three hundred twenty out of three hundred and thirty seven communities, according to ClearGov, which basically takes that two thousand seventeen data and scrubs it across the state. So that's just where that is, and I just wanted to put that in. As I said before, what happens if, if the override isn't placed or approved? Status quo. I'm not gonna tell you, tell you that highway's gonna close, or we're not gonna do what we, what we're already doing now. And, you know, I will say that I did see one, one straight comment out there that, that, that said that we, that, you know, the snow removal wasn't that good this year because we were trying to make a point of an override.
You don't have justice.
No, that will not happen. And, and, and that, when nobody's trying to make a point, the staff is the staff, and we're doing the best we can. So what it comes down to now is just the procedure. As you know, the select board is the sole, the sole authority. We're placing an override or a ballot. That's up to you. You, you approve any warrant article, and, and per statute, you are the only authority who can vote to put it on a ballot. It requires town meeting approval, as well as ballot approval at an annual or special election. And in both cases, unlike a debt exclusion, which requires a two-thirds appropriation at town meeting, it requires a simple majority at town meeting, and a simple majority at the ballot.
Correct. Okay, so I'm gonna start with the board first. Rick? Do we, well, we're?
Well, it's just discussion, we're not voting on anything, right?
Well, it's got down here.
It's up to you. I, I think at some point in time, we've talked about this a few times. I think if we're going to do, if, if there's a, the decision needs to be made at some point, because one way or the other, we gotta figure out public presentations, if, if we're doing them, or what direction we're going to go to. It's really up to you to set the time, the timeframe, but I, I think if not this meeting, at next meeting, we should, we should make a decision one way or the other.
I think, Bruce, let's, um, let's have the board give their discussion on it, okay? And then we'll have some of the public give their discussion on it. And then if the board wishes to entertain a motion, to do, put this to a vote tonight, and the, and this would be to put it on the ballot, just so everybody understands. This is not going on the warrant, this is going on the ballot.
No.
Yes, wasn't it going on the ballot first? I had this conversation with you.
You are going to, you are going to vote to put it on, if you vote, you have to vote to put it on the ballot.
Okay.
You also need to vote to put it on the warrant for it, for the process to go forward.
Vote tonight?
My assumption is if, my assumption is if you vote one, you'd be voting the other. You know, because it's a two-step process.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's, let's go, let's do one step first. Let's, first of all, let's have the discussion on the proposition two and a half override, and I'm gonna start with Rick.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before, before.
Hey, what, what are you talking?
I just, I just wanted to point out that Dennis Griffin is in the audience, and he's available to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, can I finish? All right.
No, you can start.
I'm gonna start with Rick. Rick, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm gonna recap a little bit from what I did at the last meeting. You know, we still have over a hundred and eighty five families that go to the food pantry every month. And it's not because, you know, they're not out there working, they're working, they just can't make ends meet. At the last meeting, okay, so we had over twenty five families that applied for fuel assistance. Since that meeting, okay, we've had seven more apply. They just can't make ends meet. Okay, I have a letter and an email that came from a resident in Cherry Valley, Rochdale Water District. Their water bill is over three hundred dollars a month, and nine hundred dollars behind. They need some relief. You know, these, what, the Cherry Valley, Rochdale Water District, they got money in their account. Why can't they give these people a break and stop threatening them with shutting their water on? I don't know. I don't know what's happening here. But I think that a lot more work has to be put into this before we can move forward. Okay, sixty four thousand dollars miscellaneous, okay? That's all well and good, okay, supplies, I know you need supplies, but that's an open end to give somebody sixty four thousand dollars. To do construction stuff, who has the construction supervisor's license? Does someone on the staff have one? Does?
No.
You have to have a license, in order to put up a wall, and that has to be inspected by the building inspector. We have to go a lot further than what this is, okay? Seventy thousand dollars for custodial service. What's gonna be done? Are the rugs gonna be vacuumed every night? Are the baskets gonna be emptied every day? Are the toilets gonna be cleaned every day? How's this gonna work? Who's gonna clean the snow up the walks in the wintertime? The custodial people, or the highway people?
Highway.
Okay, so you're gonna take a guy off the truck from plowing the streets to do the sidewalks so the town hall can open. That doesn't, that doesn't really cut us in time, okay? The building doesn't open on time. It happened already, this year, this past two storms. Okay, one storm, the building wasn't ready to open. So, you know, there needs to be a lot more, okay? You come down here, roll a law for additional roadside mowing and tree trimming. We were told when we went for a million dollar override, debt exclusion for equipment, that by getting the new trimmer, they would speed up the progress on the side of the roads, trimming the trees and everything. Okay, yeah. So why do we need more people? It's gonna speed it up just by getting the new equipment. All right, we already got the debt exclusion for that. We haven't, and that's not on the tax bill yet. We got the library, that's not on the tax bill yet. There's a lot of uncertainty. We're having meetings with water, about the future of the water, and we don't know what's gonna happen. But the people in town need us to take a stand. And, you know, to rush into this, we were told on town meeting floor, okay, by the highway superintendent, when he went for the debt exclusion, that he would not be coming back for any more overrides or debt exclusions or money for at least two to three years, if he got this equipment. Now here we're back in less than a year. So, you know, there's just a lot of things that have to be, you know, solved out here. The washing and waxing of floors in the buildings. Who's gonna do it? Are they gonna be done once a week, once a month? Seventy thousand dollars isn't gonna cut it, to get a quality service. And everybody talks about the library being a beautiful building, which it is. You're not gonna go in there and have something done half-assed, plain English. And seventy thousand dollars taking care of everything else to get a quality job, isn't gonna work. Also calls here, okay, additional townwide fleets maintenance, okay? This person that's gonna go on there, is it a certified mechanic? If the mechanic is there working on the truck, which is a certified mechanic, this other person, if they go change brakes on a cruiser, and that cruiser gets in an accident, lose life. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be ironed out here. This is, it's been done too quick. People need a lot more answers, and a lot of people are hurting in this town. And I still work, okay, seventy hours a week, to pay my bills. I think a lot of other people work around here, too. So I think that if I had my way right now, that I'd make a motion that we put this on until two thousand twenty.
Is that a motion? Do I have a second?
Discuss first. Discussion first.
No second.
I have to have a, I have a, no second?
No.
I'll make, I'll make a second. Okay, Brian, you're up.
So am I up to?
You don't have a question.
We don't have a question.
The motion is to move it, so now the discussion has to be on moving it.
Well, he made the, he just made a motion.
To move it to twenty twenty, so the discussion has to be on moving it to twenty twenty versus now.
As opposed to what we were doing originally, just discussing it.
Okay.
All right, I'll withdraw right now.
So, okay.
Now, in the discussion.
Let's go back to the discussion. And Rick has some valid points, but he doesn't have, you know, ten thousand people at Lester's common views, okay? Putting this on a ballot does not etch anything in stone to anyone. And these people who write that, you know, I'm gonna stop it, it's not gonna, we need, if it's not on a ballot, then it can't go forward to make the proper plan, and it's not worth investigating the next step. We clearly need to have to move forward. Well, maybe the school should've came up and asked for money, okay? And then let's see how many, how the townspeople wanna react. So you guys, at some point, need to draw the line where you wanna go. By putting it on a ballot does not make it etched in stone anywhere, anywhere, okay? I don't agree with some of these numbers. You know that. I've been, you know, I, do we need to form it? You know, but like, and I, Dave and I had discussions, seventy thousand, we don't know. But unless we say we're going forward, why would Dave waste his breath researching? Or anyone, even Dennis researching? If we're not willing to commit to it, then you're right. Let's not look forward, keep status quo, and people wanna bitch about something, don't bother, 'cause they're doing the best they can. And that's the way they do discussion. I mean, I agree, there's, and don't, you know, we all struggle for the next dollar, I respect that. You're not the only one, I'm not the only one. I don't think anyone in this room has got that million dollar house on the hill here in Leicester, okay? And no one's saying that. But what we're saying is, if we need to improve the services of the town, at some point, we, we have to swallow it. Everyone, you know, somebody's gonna, oh, the library, oh, the fire department. Okay, guys, we can all bitch about something. Trust me, I can make seven things. But we have to decide which way we want the town to go. I know we have the water thing and the sewer thing in front of us. I'm part of that, so I understand it. But again, that's a whole nother fight on the other side of the playground. What we're looking at today is what we have in front of us, to improve our services in town. Is that worth putting on the ballot? Yes, it is. Again, you're ten people. I'm asking to put it on the ballot for the other ten thousand people in town, or the other four thousand that come out to vote.
That takes the tiger off your.
Up, up, up.
No.
Let me, let me go through the board first, then you can have your comments, please. Harry?
Because that's what, I didn't tell you how I'd vote for it, just so you know.
All right. Harry?
I think both of yous have great points. You, you really do. I've, I've asked for some information. I, I kinda got it. I wish it was in this presentation today, of what is the tax bill going to be next year? What is the tax bill? I, I know the fire department's on there, I know the library's on there, but it isn't all on there. The feasibility study isn't all on there. There are debt exclusions. What is the actual cost it's going to cost the people? This is only eighty five dollars per average house. What's a real average house? Two hundred and fifty thousand. I, you know, give or take, mine isn't that. But, um, it, it isn't telling the people what it costs. So I've been door to door, last weekend and this weekend, and, and been to multiple board meetings, and I haven't gotten one person that's. and I haven't gotten one person that's for this. Not one person can afford it, can justify it. On the other hand, exactly what you said, exactly what Dennis says, exactly what David said, if we do wanna have more services. I don't think this is the year for this, I really don't. I think with all of the debt exclusions that are coming up on our, our butts for next year, I know they're already here, we've already voted on them, if you were there or not, they're already going to be there, we have to pay those. But I don't really know what it's gonna cost. I'm sitting here and I really don't know what it's gonna cost me. I'm afraid to vote for this, to put it on, even to, to move it forward from this section at this point. Because what is it really gonna cost the people? And this water thing, even though you're part of it, that is killing this town. It's going to ruin this town. People have to open their eyes up, and I, I know water isn't the discussion, but it's a discussion of what we're talking here. The Cherry Valley Sewer District going bankrupt is going to kill everybody's property values. And then this goes down and the tax rate goes up and it goes even higher. On top of that, you've got all these debt exclusions for next year, but you also have the automatic two and a half that we have to run the town with. So, you've got this, plus the automatic, we can only go up two and a half percent. And it, it just, it's gonna get out of hand at a certain point. I don't know if this is the year for it.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, you're up.
I agree with everything everybody else has said, but we've been, like David said, level-funded budgets for two years because we don't have the revenue to increase anybody's budgets. Services are going down. Everybody always says, why should we build a new building? Because they never maintain them. This is the one way to be able to maintain them. I'm not sure I agree with needing four people. We need more information. And I'm assuming as we get up to the Maytown meeting and the ballot, that these numbers would be flushed out. Things that need to be done, for example, the whole senior center. It's gonna be twenty years old next year. The outside of that building has never been maintained. The shingles are burnt, they're, some of them are moldy. If we don't do maintenance on them pretty soon, we're gonna have to reshingle the whole building. If a couple of guys from highway, added to highway can help do that, versus having to contract out for, I think the estimate Rachel got at one point was twenty-eight thousand dollars for someone to, a company to come in and clean those shingles and restain them. That's a lot of money. That's, you know, labor, if we have the, the guys in the summer available to do it. We've heard over and over again, and anybody who's been to any of the fields, our fields are a disaster compared to other towns. All we ever do is mow them and maybe water them. One of them has irrigation, mo- the others don't. We don't have anything of, to maintain them, we don't have the pride. We always talk about, you know, let's make Leicester better. Harry, you've been on the facade for the town hall. It, it's, needs to be done before the cupola falls off. And then it would ta- cost even four times as much to put it back up there. If we can start maintaining the buildings, the police station's eighteen years old. It needs maintenance. The library is going to need continual maintenance with the new equipment so that it, in fifteen years, it doesn't need major work. To all of that, I, I mean, I'm, I still haven't made up my mind personally if I will vote for this. But I think it needs to be, we need to put it on the ballot in the town meeting warrant, flush out the numbers, and if they don't make sense come May fourth, we pass over and we don't do it. But there, I agree with Rick, this is coming in pretty fast, but we still have two months to flush out more numbers and, um...
Just say no.
Right, it... I just think we, we need to do something, 'cause we have to at some point. The revenue's not there. At some point, we're gonna be laying off more teachers, we're gonna be laying off police officers, we're gonna be laying off, um, highway guys, and they'll be not at seven with one out. They'll be down to four. And we won't be able to have contractors either, which means salting roads like for this past storm is gonna take eight hours instead of five or four, and so on. At some point, we have to reset the base because we don't have the revenues. I get it, I don't, I went years with no raise, so I get all of that, being able to pay your bills. But we're running a full business here for the whole town, and at some point, we have to reset the base, and part of that, and if any of you have been listening, I've pushed since I've been elected to redo all the union contracts, so the raises aren't there outrageous. Because there's steps and there's cost of living raises, and they shouldn't get the double bump. And the biggest one is the schools, which we have no say or control over.
No control.
I mean, one of the reasons they're in the boat they're in, the number they gave us, is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars just due to raises. Next year, it's the same thing. They, we don't have, which means they get their money, we have to take it from somewhere else. So if we don't reset the base so that we can maintain our services, which are already cut since twenty thirteen, they've gone down every year since two thousand and eight. The p- number of people who work in the town hall is, is half of what it was fifteen years ago. I, I think we need to put it on the, the warrant and the ballot. And if we pass over it, we pass over it, and we have, if we know ahead of time, we won't be submitting it to the Attorney General's office to put it on the ballot, 'cause we'll know before we get to town meeting whether or not we're gonna pass over, and we have to submit it two days before town meeting to the Attorney General for the ballot. So if we're gonna pass over it, we won't submit it for the ballot, and it won't be on the ballot.
Okay. Okay, now.
Your turn.
Oh, I get a turn finally. Thank you. I, I had a lot of phone calls, and, and like Harry went door-to-door, and I have not found anyone as of tonight. As of five thirty-seven tonight was my last answering machine that I picked up. What are you people doing? It's not what we're doing, we have to, this is a business, and we do have to look out for the town. But we're all elected by everybody in this room. You're the one that elected us to make sure that we can take care of you and see what your needs are. Are you gonna get everything? Absolutely not. Are your roads not gonna get plowed if we don't get these four people? No one's saying that. They have to be plowed for emergency vehicles, okay? Are they gonna be perfectly scraped down to pavement when he's only got a handful of people? I can't answer that. Okay, but I can answer that I know everyone I talk to, and people, somebody that's in this room that came up to my house, I know you're not for it. And honest and truly, in two thousand and five, when I got voted in here, I said I would never, sitting on this board, vote a two and a half in. And even if it goes to the ballot, my vote on town floor will be no. And that is my prerogative, okay? No one has to tell me, oh, you're gonna have to, no, it is not for that reason. It was for the reason when I ran, I told everybody that voted for me, that came up to my house, that went to the meetings before I got voted in, look it, I cannot promise you anything. I still hold that today. Okay, and I know there's a lot of people hurting in this town. I know my town very well. I know a lot of my people in this town, okay? Do we need this two and a half right this minute? I don't believe so. Couldn't we wait another year and see what we're gonna get in for revenues from cultivate and stuff? We don't have that money yet. That's a good avenue, maybe. I'm not sure. But as of right now, my opinion is, where I stand, I am not voting for a two and a half override. Dead exclusion, those are totally different things. So now I promise that I will let you guys sentence, if you can let the public talk, and then any questions I will have, just answer for them, if that's okay. Okay, one at a time, and please be, be nice. I mean this.
Yelling, please.
No yelling, no arguing, please be nice. Say what you wanna say, but please, this is a public meeting and everybody is on TV. Thank you.
My name is Bill Robert, I live at one seventy-five White Burke Street. I've been paying taxes in this town since nineteen seventy-four. I got educated in the schools in this town, okay? Some suggestions. This board should sit on that side so that when you talk, you talk to the people. You can't hear people when they're sitting here talking and going that way. That's a suggestion.
Good point.
Second point. Madam Chairman, you made a motion that you were gonna do X amount of things. You went to Rick, and Rick started the process of explaining his perspective. And I believe, based on Robert's rule of order, which is not me, he was out of line making a motion to table this to two thousand twenty. You didn't continue what you said you were gonna do. So his motion is out of line.
And that's why he rescinded.
That's not the point. You made the statement that everybody on the selectmen board were gonna voice their opinion, and then you'd go to the public. If you allowed him to carry his motion and this board went to a vote, it would be null and void. You didn't follow Robert's rules of order, okay?
Good point.
Now, um, I've been working with Dennis to try and get some of the things squared away in my area, okay? I have a tree that's this big, and you can stick your hand right through the middle.
Got this rod.
And go all the way out. So I watched today, making sure that that tree didn't come and fall on the power lines. And that's just one of three or four that are still left that he hasn't even got to.
Right.
We have a good superintendent here who's ambitious and wants to do a lot for the town. I'm the first one who's gonna say, I'll vote for the two and a half override. I can't afford it, I'm retired, but you know what? We can't afford not to do it. You come, you drive up and down my street and you pick anyone, anybody else's streets. The whole road's gone to pot. You don't have any drainage. He's gonna be paving my street next year. The crown's gone from one end to the other. He used, his department used to have almost twelve people. Four or five people all went out at the same time. The highway department lost a ton of people. How many got replaced?
None.
None. So where did all the money go that was allocated for all those salaries?
To the schools.
To the schools.
All I'm saying is, money's not going where it should be. You had it allocated for workers. It was already there. You had dollars allocated for custodians. That went to an outside contract.
Yep.
Well, now you're coming back in and you want more money, you're trying to rob the highway department, and you staff from the highway department and put them to work in the schools. It's like.
You can't do that.
Hold on, we're trying to increase the volume of the staffing to maintain just the grounds. That is common practice in all local municipalities. And by doing that, it shows abroad savings for most departments. Some are better than others, some aren't. And it also increases unification as a whole unit, all departments working together for the general public, the residents. That's all. Thank you.
In, in my opinion, if we don't do the override, we're only gonna shoot ourselves in the foot. Yes, we have problems, we have water problems, we have everything under the sun. We have, we have a library that just doubles its size. We've thrown out the historical museum that's up on top, that nobody knows where it's gonna go. We have a fire department that we're spending money on already, and it's a brand-new building. We have a police department. We're don't have anybody answering the phones at the police department.
We don't.
I mean, we're a cowards without a horse to pull it. That's what I see. There's a lot of confusion here in town. And you know what? It's, it's gotta come out of our pockets. I don't like it any more than anybody else. But we've been robbing Peter and paying Paul for a long time now, and nothing's getting done. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Margaret Allen, I'm on Brown Street in Cherry Valley. Um, I just a couple things. First, it's not about all the weed and like, the, the highway weed, like, it's really not, it's, it's about more.
I know, he, Dennis, Dennis knows that. He knows it has nothing to do with him, he's a great superintendent.
But in addition to what this gentleman said about the Cherry Valley, that as of last May, twenty-eight homes went, had, had liens put on them for the water bills. This May, they'll be doing this again. So somebody who had a lien put on, and I'm just saying, 'cause I know this is Cherry Valley, that once these homes go into foreclosure, it's gonna affect everybody. It's, it's a downward trend, and you really don't wanna see that. So there's twenty-eight as of last year, and they'll be doing that again this May. Any savings on this thing from any budgets should actually go back to the town. There's money budgeted in these departments for some of the work that's gonna be done by the highway department now. Any savings in those departments, I think, should go back into the budget. But, I mean, and I do believe this is too rushed. This is way too rushed, there's too many questions here. And I did have a lot more notes, but lucky for you, I can't find them all. Yeah, that's, that's basically, seriously, and it is all, it's, it's all one playground. The water, everything, it's all one playground, we're not separating them because, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good. Same here. Chris Calros, nine-nine, Musso Road. I'm very familiar with this process, I was in finance advisory from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and twelve. Spent thirteen years, so I'm well aware of the issues that Dennis is dealing with. One question I have is, how much savings is gonna be, is gonna be done by centralizing a lot of these services, which we, I think is a great idea? And I think with snow removal, the maintenance, the fields, how much savings is gonna be, are we gonna see in town from, from this on an annual basis?
That's, that's part of, part of the ongoing review, like, for instance, just looking, just looking at the custodial part of it, we have to cross that out first and figure out which best methodology is there. Then we can, then, then we can break it into where, which department it's coming out of. So, you know, we, right now, right now, we're, we're at a core estimate, and we can, we can boil it down from there, but we're just in the general, the opening discussion of it, really. But for instance, you know, one of the comments that was made, um, was the school budget would, the school had calculated at one point that they'd see savings of approximately a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars based on a full year's worth of service. But that's, that depends, it depends on how many times you're plowing it. The field maintenance side is, is a fairly easy calculation for them. The other part is kind of a bit of an unknown. But that would be money, that would be cost savings within their budget. They're obviously gonna see the, the lion's share of it because the work that's there is, is pretty significant. But, you know, we're, we're, depending on where the board goes, you know, we can boil that down a little bit better and get more cost estimates as to, as to what the departments that are, that are affected are currently spending, and then we can bring that, that forward.
But David, isn't the school gonna keep that hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars?
It's like one-twenty.
It's.
Because they're in the hole by about half a million to three-quarters of a million.
Right, so.
I know.
The goal is, all the budgets that see savings, any budget that sees savings, will be able to, to repurpose those funds for the other, the other purposes of those departments. Once again, the school's always the biggest one. Once again, the school's always the biggest one. They've, you know, they've got a large budget deficit now. If we wind up taking some portion of that deficit away through the override, we're improving, we're improving the fields, we're doing the snow removal. That allows that money to be utilized against other things that they're already planning on having to cut. So, you know, I, I mean, one comment was made at one point that it's found money. No, it's not found money. You're, you're eliminating part of a forecast deficit. So whether you're cutting to, you're cutting a couple of employees to make up for that or not, depending if on the override goes through, that's what it is. It's not new money. It's money that they'll be able to use for other purposes.
Well, my recommendation would be, any, any, any savings should go back to repurpose back to the highway departments. Because if you're going to centralize these services, then the, these, these town departments need to basically pay for those services in a centralized manner. And that money would go back to the, to the, to the highway department so we, so they can do it. You can't, you can't take and, and add more money to the budget and then take these savings from these, from the services that they're, that these other departments are going to be saving and then spend them elsewhere. That's why they're saying it's got free money. We've got to re-allocate that money for what it's, what it really needs to be used for. It sounds like you can probably get close to what he's looking for on an annual basis without even going to an override.
Thank you.
Robert Swainy, 450 Marshall Street. I had a prepared statement which I was going to pass out to everybody, but after hearing some of the comments today, I'm going to change it a little bit. That survey that the administrator did on all the towns, and we were 290th, I have a copy of that here. What that survey didn't say is what the income level was for those towns. You're comparing it to towns where the average tax bill is $17,000 a year. Those people make close to a million dollars a year. So that survey, to me, isn't relevant to Leicester, first of all. The income, as Mr. Antonavica pointed out, we have some people in this town that run food stamps, that are getting fuel assistance. We have a lot of people like myself and my wife that are retired on fixed incomes. We've already given you seven debt exclusion overrides. We've had enough. The solution, I know you had a problem, and Dennis does a great job. I'm not picking anybody out. I'm not going to try to tell you where to get the money. I'm going to ask you not to try to tax us anymore. Find another solution besides ripping us off some more. We've paid enough. I like young, let's wait a couple of years and take another look at it. I think that was a great idea. Anybody have any questions for me?
Okay, anyone else from the audience?
Good evening. I'm Rick Hidry, Old Hill Road, Cherry Valley. Last week I was at a sewer meeting. Last year I was at a water meeting. They told me my bill was going up 100%. Then I understand we built an $8 million library. I have a library. I didn't need another one. Those are the things that bug me. The bills keep going up. This fall, I went to the election, and when they handed me the ballot, they said, "Turn it over." On the back, there was a question for the highway department. It will only cost me, I think she said $10 a quarter. I'm on fixed income. Many of these people are on fixed incomes. We can't keep doing it. Actually, I think this is way out of your league. This should be a state, we have state reps, we have state senators. Why are we going to these people? I understand this is a new bill, where they're going to give us some more money to the school department? No?
There, there is.
But there isn't.
But we do not fall under the increase date.
Well, then you go to your state reps and your state senators, and we do this. That's what they're here for.
You're working on it.
We are working.
I know, they told me, I met with one. They, they-
So we're working on it, sir. Go ahead.
We are.
No, working on it doesn't do it. Seriously.
You made your phone call as well, and we did too.
Yep. And that's what you have to do. I think we all have to do it. We all have to call them and say, "We need help." This is a small town. A gentleman sitting in front of me at the meeting the other night, a young man. His house was already, once, put in a lien. His mortgage went up because the bank paid the lien. And he said, "I'm behind again. Am I going to get another lien?" And I said, "Yes." When does it stop? Do we need to put a moratorium on building account? Because I know there's two more going in on Old Hill Road. We can't afford it. They're not, they're, they're taking more money out of us than giving us. Two warehouses.
How does that hurt us? If I may ask you to cheat it. How does that hurt us getting houses?
How does that hurt us? Because there's more people in Cherry Valley at the sewer department. Do you know that we have to be in charge more than we need?
But the question is, you said, "Building houses hurts the town." How is building houses hurting?
So it's in Cherry Valley. We've got enough people. We ran out of water. We've run out of water.
You didn't run out of water.
Yeah, we did run out of water a year ago. I was at the meeting, and they said, "We have two days' supply." And then, what did they say? "We have to buy it from Worcester." Isn't that what we do in Cherry Valley?
Not because you ran out.
Well, why are we doing it?
It was quality as well.
Because the DEP wouldn't authorize the new treatment plan.
As I said, this goes higher up. I'm talking at least the state level. You help us out. You can't just throw it on these little towns and say, "You figure it out." When you open the, the pot place, that's what the state did. They gave it to you and said, "Figure it out." They didn't give you any help. You figure it out. Or I'll figure it out, I don't want to pay anymore. I'm lucky I married money, but-
Thank you. I haven't found it yet. Max?
Hi, Mary Kate Hannah, Excuse me, Woodbine Street. Those are really nice numbers you put together, Mr. Administrator. But that's based on 2017, and any of your tax rate bills are not even including all the debt exclusions that's just hitting, coming through now. So those numbers are not even in these things, and that would change the complete rating that you're looking at. So that, you know, I know this looks very favorable for what, what this proposal is trying to go for, but it's really just not up to its power right now because in those numbers, you did not include all the debt exclusion that is now hitting our tax bills. Second of all, the school committee has seemed to have too much power over this town. And the one thing that we can all do together is that the town hall floor shut down the government. When it comes down to vote, question number two, do you approve this budget of $30 million? We say no, because the school committee shouldn't be getting 75% anymore. They need to give back to the town like everybody has given to them. We're, we're trying to do a simple service in town that will increase every, be a good increase to everybody. And I'm worried for this, Dennis, but I don't want to pay for it. So, and I think it's a brilliant idea. And, and a lot of people do. But the problem is, we just can't take on any more burden. And when the school is still, there's contracts, and like you said, they're getting these enormous increases year on year. $488,000 just in salaries for one year. They're not sticking to just a two and a half increase. Everybody else is level funded. They keep growing and growing and growing. It's not right. We need to force them back to the planning board, back to their budget, and come in. Everybody's in a deficit, so let them feel the pain now too.
To the chair. They are feeling the pain. Their budget is level funded. They're cut- Yes, it is. It is level funded.
It is level funded.
To the dollar from last year. And they're not, they're getting the same small increase that the municipal side is from the new revenue. And, but that's why they're closing Memorial School. That's why they're laying off 13 people. It's because their budget is level funded. They can't keep the people. They're laying them off. And they're closing the school to bridge that deficit of $800,000 from year to year.
So how do we stop it? How do we stop it? The problem is, none of us can stop it on our own. We have to stop them. Stop the school committee.
They need to renegotiate their contract.
I would say, I would say, think about question two on the ballot, on the warrant, when it comes up. Instead of saying, "Yeah, I approve $40 million," start saying no, and let people go back to the planning board. And so let Dennis get his people, and the rest of the town will be taken care of.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Bill Brennan, 24 Windsor of Leicester. And I'm not here because I want to be. Believe me. I believe that fire, police, ambulance, and highway should be the first four people to get to eat from the trough. That they should get what they need because they're either providing for our defense or our safety in this town. And that's why we all get together to become a town, a state, even ended up, that's how the United States came about. Now, would I like to pay for it and say, "Go"? Yeah, I can, I'd like to. I'm past the age of retirement. I'm working on a month-to-month basis. My hands aren't shaking here today because I'm nervous, because that's not it. They've been trying to figure out for two years what's going on with me. So I'm working from month to month. He's talking about the average tax bill. I'll take $250 for my house today, but I'm paying more than the 36. I'm paying 39 without adding anything else, okay? We're all talking about what's going on. There just is no more. You want to take a progressive, five-to-10-year look down the road? Let's unincorporate Leicester and see whose offense we'd be. Let me just get rid of every problem we got. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question. GoFundMe thing. I'm down to the municipality, and we really wanted to raise money for, for a project like this. Can you do a GoFundMe? Can you do that? Can the town accept that kind of money?
Can we? We take donations.
We take donations, but-
We can't.
If you, if you remember right, about four years ago, they had a group together for public safety. They did fundraising and stuff and gave the money to police and fire, I think.
Mostly police.
Yeah, police and fire, so, yes, it could happen.
But again-
But it can't be set up by the town.
Right, we, yeah, the town can't set it up.
And donations, by their nature, are one time. So you can donate for a cause, but we can't fund positions or anything else.
For about 20 years right now.
You can't, you, you, you can fund projects or you can cut, fund gifts, but you can't, we can't fund positions, per se, because you need recurring revenue to do that. So.
Go ahead.
My name is Craig Littor, and I'm on Craig Street. And I moved here three years ago. I lived over in Tectum Square in Worcester. And I thought I was moving to a great town, and all the people are great. But what's going on in, with our taxes, the water, everything? I was in Leicester, now Rochdale, for six months, and then all of a sudden, our water department, our reservoir was condemned. Okay, they let it run so low that they couldn't control the chlorine part of it. So the DEP shut it down. So now we buy our water from Worcester. And being a former resident of Worcester, I was going from $120 a quarter, water and sewer, to $97 a month, water, and $40 a month, sewer. Okay? So, I mean, that's like, it's more than triple what we're paying. You know, we're a family of four, you know, with one income. And I don't know what to do. I don't know if I need to sell my house before the water department goes bankrupt. And my property value has dropped by 25 to 30%. Or do we, you know, work together as a town and try to get this water department recovered? I'm just thinking, right now at the moment, I don't know how much more we can pay. I just don't know. I mean, I know that you need more money. I mean, the Rochdale Park is a dozen pine trees. They're like 40 feet tall. They've been dead for two years. Are we going to wait till they fall and kill somebody? I mean, what are we going to do? We have to, we have to do more in the maintenance, yes. Do we need a better maintenance schedule? Does it, you know, you know, a, a more defined maintenance schedule? And then get a budget for each definition? I, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think throwing $250,000 at it at this point in time is going to fix it. I just, I don't think it's going to help anybody.
Hold on. Okay.
I think as far as, I would like to see a vote tonight to see who's for and who's against, whether it's going on a ballot and a warrant or not. You can't put this thing off. Let's do it in public while everybody's watching here.
Allah means in public. This is just the first time we've got guests. Whatever I get here?
I know why they're here.
To get some answers from you, whether you're going to go for it or not.
Okay, well, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Is anybody-
There's one thing I forgot to say.
Go ahead, because I want Dennis to be able to talk, and then I want to bring it back to the board.
There's another 800-pound gorilla that's in the room that I'm sure that probably nobody in this room even knows about that's going to rear its head. That's the litigation over the fire department, to the tune of a million and a half to $2 million. That's not going to go away for nothing. When that comes in, that again, we're going to have to pay, whether we like it or not. So add that on to what you're paying, what you're not paying, what you're going to have to pay. I mean, I can, I might, I'm squeezing out right now by what I can. As soon as the doctor tells me, "Hey, man, you're done," or "Hey, you only got this much time left," that's it, folks. So then you're going to own my house? Like I said, $250, come buy it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I hate to interrupt Dennis because he's been waiting, but just one point. The reason that 2017 was used for the reporting is that's the latest updated DLS figure I have. It has all of, all of the cities and towns in the state, in the database for that time. I don't have 18, I don't have 19, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Okay. Dennis, before I let you speak, Brian just has one-
Yeah, to the gentleman from Cherry Valley, just, so you, you, unfortunately, because we buy from Worcester, they don't charge Worcester rates. They charge out-of-town rates, which is about three times. And it wasn't a chlorine issue with the pond. It was a new DEPA regulation about some germ of some sort that falls from leaves that now makes it non-viable. Same thing with Moose Hill Water.
The last superintendent told us it was the byproduct of chlorine. That's what we're going to close down.
Okay, it's not it, but, just so you know.
I'm sorry. What you just said about the, the city, the city of Worcester doesn't charge us an outrageous price. It becomes outrageous when Cherry Valley Sewer adds all their fees to our water. It's like a 300% markup in some sense.
Your water, not the sewer.
We've called the city. We know what the city is charging Cherry Valley. It's not what we get on our bills.
Yeah.
It's because of the debt.
Okay, now please let me have Dennis say his piece. Thank you. Dennis, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm going to try and be gentle.
Now you have to be.
Selectman Antonavica. Comment that was made on Town Hall Floor was there would be no further debt exclusions to come forward to make the massive upgrade which was needed to bring the equipment up to standards. It would be done on a capital program or five-year plan after the debt exclusion, which we continue to work on. The question on the roadside mowing. The design concept on the new mower will perform more efficiently and operate, operator efficiency will increase dramatically. You will get more mowing out of it for a simple reason, it will remain running. So plus the design from a four-stick operation to a standard cabin chassis and drive train to an automated one, there are improvements. There are improvements. My focus was to shave it on every angle I could, to increase everything I could with the staffing I have. You can only skin a cat so many ways. So now, if I take an individual off to put him on the roadside mower, that drainage, sweeping, mowing, catch bases, anything that's not getting done, it's the pattern of robbing to Peter to pay Paul. It's continual. You don't get eight, you get eight hours out of a body. I try to stretch it to nine or ten, but I get eight. You can't get sixteen. It just doesn't happen. One guy cannot do two jobs. The mower will be out, I'm hoping, on average, three days a week. Now it's out three days a month, and that's when it runs. It's thirty years old. It's, it's not designed to take that longevity in its conditions. So as for the shoveling of the buildings, as the superintendent, side by side with the janitor, every storm this year, and sometimes the part-time guy who's now out for medical reasons, I run the shovel. I run the salt bucket. Not this last storm, but the storm before when I came up, it's a little aggravating when you see your boss and his secretary out shoveling the stairs, because we had put in about forty-eight hours being awake, about twenty-something hours, twenty-six hours behind the wheel. Those who did the shoveling. We had a brief discussion on the stairs, and myself and my staff that I didn't let go home to sleep, shoveled it. We came back in after about a forty-minute nap. Upgrades to the equipment, we can get more services out of that. The pieces of equipment that I put in the debt exclusion, you design properly for multi-functions. And I could sit here all night and explain it, a lot of you wouldn't get it, some of you will. I designed it to get the maximum out of it, as much as I could, from mowing grass to plowing snow to loading trucks to cleaning everything, just more. Again, I could have a thousand pieces of brand-new equipment if I got five guys. Someone has to run shovel, somebody has to run rate, someone's watching traffic, someone's watching the guy in the trench, someone's trucking material. I'll, I'll get to you, I'll get to you. I'll let you fire away, just let me finish up. Go ahead, Mr. Sweeney.
I don't think anybody here is agreeing that you need more help.
I agree.
Just wait, they're gonna get the money from you.
This is, let me finish, okay? The crew blow, that was brought up also. That was going out the bid, they had numbers of fifty-seven and sixty thousand, crazy numbers. Because we had somebody get involved with facilities with a better focus on it. I think the price was what, twelve, David? It was done complete. The building square footage. This building, these rooms down here just came on, what, the last five, seven years? And I added more office down here. Now the entire third floor is operational, second floor, first floor, gymnasium, that's a lot of square footage. Still, one point five guys. They haven't seen me sound. We used to do the PD, they pay their own now. Now the library, beautiful building, one point five guys. You figure out how long it takes you to vacuum, I do it in my house, vacuum, dust, all of that stuff. Couple hours. Think of your house as this size and everything else. I'm just giving you the facts so you have a perspective, okay? Everyone keeps saying the custodial, baby, don't be mad at me. In this override, we're gonna get the five, four bodies, which will be a division. Solely dedicated to what their responsibilities are. I have five guys now that are dedicated to every responsibility that comes our way. Digging the power trench for the new project out here for cost savings, tree limbs that come down, street signs that get wiped out, clog bases, drainage, tree removal, roadside mowing, mowing the parks, painting the graffiti off of all the parks, fixing the fences. It's so broad of a spectrum of what we do. Constantly robbing Peter to pay Paul, and the prices, everything's falling apart. Everybody said, so the staffing for the custodial, we have one position we hope to open up again, which would actually be the fifth in the new division. And some of the money that's already funded for the custodial position here could possibly go towards the outside contracting. And then that would reduce the money, if we can make it work that way. Like everybody's been saying here, if you don't do something now and move forward. Everyone's saying, wait a couple of years, wait a couple of years. I'm all for it. What's coming, if they just close Memorial, and you wanna know what's out there, what's coming in two years, three years? They want a new school. So a new school comes up. I'm not begrudging, my kids graduated through this system, I did too. And that's why I came back from a really, really good job somewhere else, because I wanted to come home and do what I could do, because the community's been good to my family, me, the whole big picture. That's why I came here. My son graduated Dean's List, WPI. My daughter graduated URI, Dean's List. These people do their job. I got no complaints with the schools, but I'm not gonna fight with them over their money. I'd rather work with them. Make it happen. So my job is to present all these facts. If you wait two years, I'm out fifteen, twenty years, I'm gonna be gone, I'll be like you, complaining, I'm retired, I ain't gonna have any money. I know what's coming. It is the reality, I know that. But if I wait two years, that school is gonna put me out fifteen years. But I don't wanna fight with the school over getting it. If implementing this now helps them a little more, it may not be such a battle in the future. The lawsuit, hey, it is what it is, okay? But if I don't present the facts to you, where my focus is, what I can provide and build this into the department that will provide the services that the people deserve, I'm not doing my job. And that's everybody out there, the eleven thousand other ones. I'm not telling you to vote yes or no tonight. It's not how the system works. I'm asking them to present it to, which I think is about twelve or thirteen thousand in town now, but actually, you don't wanna really be in here, what do we get, five grand for the polls? Maybe? So those five thousand people, I want them educated. I want them to go in there and say, this is what it's gonna cost me, this is how I live, this is what I'm gonna get. Can I do this? Is the service worth it? Let me make my decision. That's all. Just let the voter make their decision, whether it's yes or no. Thank you.
You understand the thing we have override is every year?
Yes, I do.
Not just this year? Our taxes will go up every year.
I'm a single income.
Okay, one at a time.
I got you, I agree, I'm not...
Yes, you are. You're presenting it from a favorable two-and-a-half override.
No, I, I, believe me, you know, to give you a better perspective, my contract says highway. It's very definitive what my contract says, where I'm supposed to work and what I'm supposed to do. I'm well outside of that now. Well, well outside that. I'm venturing into the director's position. I didn't put any money in there for a raise, I didn't want it. That goes back to the focus on the job. You think I don't wanna take on double the work? You think I wanna take on double the staff with all those personnel issues and that? You know it, you live it, you're in the police force, it's... Well, I might. I might, it looks like you're gonna get it. I'm not opposed to it, but, so you know, it's not... My focus is service, that's what I was hired for.
Nobody's denying.
Okay, so if I can't present the good facts for people to make a good decision, that's all.
Well, we got facts too, our budgets are, can't afford any more taxes.
I agree.
All right, hold on, we're gonna do, we're gonna do this right. All right, Dennis.
Thank you.
Do you have a question for Dennis? Or do you have a statement?
I have a que, I have a question and I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Sorry, that poll's in my way, if you just barely see it.
Chris Colerose, nine-nine, Moose Hill Road. Dennis, you're doing all the right things, okay? You're looking at it the right way. When, when I was in Finance Advisory, we looked at consolidating services, okay? What I think you need to ask the selectmen in the town administration tonight is, what is the cost savings that's gonna, that's gonna give that, give the town, that can go back to you to provide the services? And then you're looking at a much smaller deficit. You don't have time to wait. If this goes to, on override and it gets shut down, it's done, you're not going back, okay? But you don't have time to wait for it. You, look, listen, you're already looking, you're already looking outside the box, okay? I think it's great what you're, what you're doing. It, we, when I was on Finance Advisory, we were looking for people to think this way, but they weren't, okay? Go further outside the box, okay? You, you guys can find the savings and you can do it internally and organically. Okay, you bring it to a town vote and it gets cut, it goes down, guess what? You're gonna do it five guys for the next two years, and school's gonna come out, you'll never, ever see it. You'll retire, you'll be in the, in the role for fifteen years and you're gonna be, you're not gonna have what you need.
I respect your opinion. I do, I understand it.
Do more work, you got, you got time. You got time.
We have sat down with the superintendent, a member of the committee. We have projected savings, savings to the school. And so we're clear, like again, it's, it's not a fight, we know the schools are hurting. I'm not gonna get into the raises and this and that, that's not, I, I'm here to work with everybody. If I can touch your department, help you out, good. You can do it back, fine, great, that's what it's all about. So the, being in the crisis that they're in, the schools, saving a hundred and thirty thousand, whether it's, and I can't remember, I apologize, if it's combined snow removal and turf maintenance. The bottom line is, if you want the services, you have to fund it. If you don't want the services, you don't fund it. That's how it is. I guess I could play every side of it. So to the voters, if you want it, vote yeah, if you don't, vote no. It's as easy as that.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Can you call for a vote now?
Uh, that is, that is not up to me, I just, let me, let me finish one section at a time. Okay, so we had all the discussions, which is what it says in our, on J, as far as our agenda, it says, proposed proposition to a half override discussion. We have completed the discussion. Can everybody agree on that? Thank you. No. Go ahead, I won't be kidding.
Chris, you and I were on Finance Advisory, we're back in the selectmen. So I, I agree with you, outside the box more. But, you know, when we had our joint meeting with Finance Advisory and the selectmen at the senior center, okay? And I don't know, you know, I, I listened to you when you talked about the budgets. Police Department budget overtime is being cut down to twenty-three thousand dollars. They're losing a police officer. It's not being filled, okay? And here we are adding five and a half people to the high line.
They are not losing a position.
It's not being filled.
It's not being filled until, until the employment situation has been, has been steady. Because you have to fin, you have to finish up with both the, we have an interim lieutenant, we have an interim police chief. We have to get that approved through civil service. Then we have, then after we get that done, then we have to negotiate with the police chief, come up with that value and then see where we are budgetarily wise. The goal is not to cut any police officers. We're not just filling it right now, we have to get through civil service first.
Right, okay, but, so they're still gonna be operating one short though, and then you get another one.
Until that, until we get that done.
Right, until you get that done, there's another one retiring, okay? So the thing is, is, is twenty-three, you know, we talk about the, you know, the, the, you know, luggage on your back here or whatever, is twenty-three thousand dollars enough for overtime when the guy's caught, you know, if they're sick or whatever? Is that gonna be enough? What was it before, a hundred? Sandy?
It's been reduced, it was, it's zero in this budget, this year's budget.
Twenty-three thousand, David, is this?
I think he spent, but he reduced it because the retirement didn't happen in August. He, he, the overtime budget got reduced and moved back to regular salary because the retirement didn't happen in August.
So there's no overtime.
Right.
The, the, the issue remains on the promotion, we're on getting additional officers, like the replacement. We're waiting, I've, I've spoken to, to the chief and we're waiting for a new list, a new, new civil service list to come out. When we get a new list, that will allow one to be filled, we're gonna have to wait on the other one. So in the end, there is the goal that the police department is not going to lose any personnel.
Okay. Dennis, Brian, you got anything else? Okay. I'll go back to where I started. All right, so the proposition two-and-a-half override discussion is now complete. Thank you. The second half of this agenda was and/or vote. This, I'm asking the board, what is your position on this? What do you wanna do?
I want the information that I've asked for before I move forward. I'm not prepared to vote tonight.
Okay. Sandy?
I think even if we have the information, I'd still vote to put it on the town meeting.
Okay. Brian?
I, my, that's my feeling. It's, it's not, again, and I've always said this since the day I was, I'm twenty percent, and I know how you said it's hard fast that you would vote no. And you can vote no.
Right.
But I don't think it's just that we don't let the voter.
Nope, they get, they have a right to vote.
And that's why I would put it on, put it on.
And Rick?
No, Dennis, it's nothing personal, but I would vote to put it on the year. And I would vote now, but the votes out here, so.
Okay. Everybody's got a different answer.
What choice?
Okay. I have to agree with Harry and to get a little more information. So with that said, because David, you're looking for a vote from the board. The townspeople don't wanna vote from the board unless it's the right vote. Sorry, I'm just stating facts, all right? So does this board feel that at our next meeting, whether we would be prepared enough to put it on the ballot? Vote on it, now, it doesn't matter whether it goes on the ballot, off the ba, ballot, or the warrant. I need to know, is this board, will this board be prepared to take a vote at our next meeting if David gives us all the information?
I guess, we have two meetings before the warrant closes. We have the fourth and the eighteenth.
Correct.
So if we, I don't know if, if we've been clear enough to David on exactly what additional information we want. I think he does know, I don't know if he can pull it together for the fourth.
I, I, I think the question is, I wanna be sure that we get that everything that you asked for is in order. So my suggestion, for lack of a better word, would be, if you wanna email me individually lists that you want, rather than put you all on the spot now and get this question answered or that question answered, I'd rather put it all, I wanna have the ability to put everything together for the board in one concise document.
So would you...
However you wanna do.
Would you say the eighteenth would be better than the fourth? Which is next week?
No, the fourth is Monday, next Monday.
The fourth is Monday?
Yeah, I would say the eighteenth is better.
Okay. So on the eighteenth, we should be, we will have to, because that's a lot, we will... Okay, so on the eighteenth, we should be, we will have to, because that's a lot, we will have to take a vote on the eighteenth. Everybody agrees on that? Okay.
With all due respect to the board, I mean, if somebody makes the motion to go for it or don't go for it,
It doesn't matter.
and seconds and passes, it can happen tonight as well. I'm just stating mine, I don't have, I don't know what it's costing anybody.
Right, then eighty-five dollars is a nice number.
It's, it's only eighty-five dollars, add the two and a half percent, add the debt exclusions from the other three things or four things in the lawsuit, we don't, that won't be back here by then, but.
Oh, we're gonna win that, so we'll, we'll actually make money there.
But, but with all due respect though, the board can, can go ahead and vote.
So, just for clarification on that, the way that it can be done will be based on FY nineteen valuations. Because the valuations are all gonna change for FY twenty, I can't predict those. I can do the effect on the tax bill, with the debt exclusions, and the, the ones that are coming up, so how the tax bill will change, and the, uh, as well as the overall, um, override, and I will even do my best to, to take the budget as it stands and put that into a third calculation. So you would have your floor, this is what it is, this is what the two and a half does, this is what the debt exclusions do, and this, this, and the override. And one thing you have to keep in mind though, you have a, this is where it gets complicated. You have a current slate of debt exclusions.
Right.
That go up and go down in a, in a given year. So, in asking the question, the, the question really that you're looking for, are you looking for the change in the overall debt exclusions, or the new debt exclusions? My guess would be you're looking for the change from that, from FY nineteen, the debt exclusions cost us X, to FY twenty, they're gonna cost us Y. If that's what you're looking for, that's the easier calculation to put in.
And if you could expand it to three years out or something, under, with the understanding of the valuations of two thousand and nineteen, that might give a better, better look to everybody?
I could do that for debt exclusions, I don't wanna, I don't wanna guess on the budget one hundred percent.
No, no, I'm not saying the budget, so debt exclusions and override that you, you're, you're asking for.
Yeah, I can do that, as long as you, like I said, leave the budget out, I could do the other pieces.
Right, like police closed, the, um, police department will be paid twenty-four, I think it was, twenty twenty-four.
Right.
There's like a few of them that's coming off on twenty twenty-four, but nothing before that.
Well, well.
No, it's the same year as the police station.
Twenty twenty-four, everything is twenty twenty-four, believe me, I looked at it, I sat with David, we went through it with a fine-tooth comb, everything is twenty twenty-four that's coming off. And the thing that people, 'cause this was brought up over the week, and I went to see David and made sure I was right, because I hate giving people false information, is that when something comes off of your tax bill, and David, are you listening, stop talking?
I'm sorry, I was looking at something, but go ahead.
Okay, so, and I'm just gonna pick one, please don't hold any numbers on it, so, where do you use the police department? So the police department comes off at twenty twenty-four. The question that was given to me is that, how much of a savings am I gonna save on my tax bill? And the thing is, is if the police department has, and I'm just using a rough number, two hundred thousand dollars left on it and is paid off in twenty twenty-four. The two hundred thousand dollars is what is used for the pers- for the percentage, for what people are saving on their taxes, correct? 'Cause it's the last payment, it's the last payment that they, they save on it.
Right, so what happens is it eventually goes down, and if you do not replace it, your rate goes down. You will have a, you have a, you'll have a calculated savings.
And it could just be pennies, but at least it goes down, so you know.
If you don't replace it, you said?
If you don't replace it.
Right.
How do you do that?
Well.
You don't go to capital project.
Right, yeah, and, and that's another, that's another subject for another town, we just wanna get through this right here. Okay, just let us finish off with this. Okay, so David, you have your directions, and it looks like this is gonna be put back on the eighteenth for a vote from the board of selectmen.
Madam Chairman, Bill Roberts, one seventy-five, White Birch, is the eighteenth going to give the town enough time pending that the board of selecting, and the group that comes here on the eighteenth votes either positive or negative, and negative means that it's not gonna go on the ballot, but if the votes are positive, is that gonna be enough time to get it on the ballot? Are we cutting ourselves too short? Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Absolutely, well done.
Projecting all these revenue shortages though, how about the income from like Cultivate, and I think you mentioned you're gonna lease some land to solar? Are you gonna project some additional income that might be coming in?
Um, unfortunately, right now, we can't, because we have no idea what it is. It's an un- it's an unknown.
Take a wild guess, throw something, okay, you're projecting other, other.
I, I, okay, alright. Um, the solar fields would be a little hard, because we don't know the size of them. Cultivate's probably the slightly easier number, because we heard they basically did somewhere in the neighborhood of eight million dollars. You know, where the sales, so far.
So far.
Well, that's our cap, so.
You know, um.
Well, not on the sales tax.
So on the sales tax, just like our, we have a cap on the host community agreement of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't have it on the sales tax, but, in that range, that would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, coming in. So.
For three fifty.
That is correct.
Maybe the lease, uh, for the solar would be another hundred, you know.
Right, but you also have other departments, other departments, including other municipal departments in schools, that will continue to need money.
But you're not asking for that, you're asking for three fifty for the highway.
Correct.
I just gave you three fifty.
Yes, but you took it away from everybody else, who would also be benefit.
But that's what you're asking for.
Yeah. That's why we've presented it before the board.
But through the chair, that's only a one-time deal, they might only do two million next year.
That's what he said.
One-time deal.
Okay.
Don't take it, I'm taking it.
Alright, so we're gonna move on, uh, to, listen, everybody's thinking, oh, it's gone, my first, one more.
Could I just, I say, just one quick thing, when you're looking at the tax rates for the other towns, could you look at their water rates for us too?
Uh, they don't, unfortunately, you don't have the same type of reporting on the water rates.
There must be a way to, to, there has to be a way to find out what the water rates are for these other.
I don't, I, to be honest, I, I'll, we're actually gonna have, uh, hopefully we'll have representatives from, from the Division of Local Services coming by tomorrow. I will ask them if they have a database for that.
Yeah, 'cause, yeah, 'cause they, they, they do, they do, so if you could include it, that would be good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wanna take a two-minute break while they all leave?
Yeah, we're gonna take a five-minute break, alright?
Back on TV, folks.
We're back.
Dennis stops wearing.
All right, next on the agenda, Totaid Street.
Town paid.
I said Totaid too, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Town paid, streetlights discussion. Look, I did, I read it so fast, it's just like, okay, town paid, streetlight discussion. We had this conversation at a last meeting, and it's continuing, Kate Kate?
Yes.
Dennis and Rick aren't here.
And I often wondered about this, so I'm very glad to be here.
Can we go to One Paxton Street, since our lovely folks are here still waiting, since we're waiting for Dennis and Rick for the other item?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Okay with that, Madam Chair?
We can, we're, sorry, we're gonna put that one on hold, we're gonna jump down to One Paxton Street reuse discussion.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm just back to say, as I mentioned earlier in the budget, in the budget discussion, there's no utilities currently within the budget for One Paxton. I, I, I'm well aware that, that the board has received the copies, the copy of the analysis done by the curator from Old Sturbridge Village, from Donnie Leonardson. And we just haven't really progressed from there up to this point. Three members of the board attended a meeting of the historic commission that discussed it. The historic committee was also present, and there was more discussion, but we haven't really gone back to the board at this particular point. So, the question still comes down to, with, with all due respect of what the curator provided in his analysis, we still maintain, we think that, A, there's a lot more work that needs to be done in order to get that building up into a, to the look that I think the townspeople would like to see that building at, number one. But number two, even going into the budget this year, I don't have to turn the lights on or the heat at this point. So, I need direction from the board to try to figure out, depending on what the board's decision is, what we're going to do, because adding it will create a budget deficit.
David, I know you and I had talked about that, that you, and you had Dennis and the building inspector go out there and look at it.
Jesus, I've just had such good reviews, and now I'm gonna get spanked. I have talked to the building inspector and the call department to get out there for a couple of vacation days, weather events, so forth, everything else. I haven't gotten it yet. I will speak on behalf of my knowledge of facilities. My interpretation of the report that was received was more of the history, the possible quality and restoration with all this possibility. It did not give an accurate description of structural, heating, electrical. It is not even remotely close to being cost effective on what that structure needs. And I will meet with the code department, the inspector, and we will draft up a rough estimate. That'll take about ten minutes over there.
All right, I know there's a lot of problems with it, because at one point I went and looked at the buyer's place way back. There's a lot of deficiencies and everything else. There has been some improvements done, but whether he's done properly or not, who knows? So, but if you're gonna make up a report with him, just make sure it's something that's accurate and not, you know, just way out.
No, you'll add the facts.
To the chair?
Yes.
So, if we may, I reached out to Diane this weekend, asked what their plan was from the Historical Society, which is who we were waiting for to hear back from.
Right.
She had some questions, they sent us some letters and stuff, but if she could add, if you may let her add what she has, if you would.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Diane Calvano, I'm president of the Leicester Historical Society. As we told the historical commission and the people at that meeting, we would be agreeable to accept financial responsibility for running the buil- building as a history museum for the town of Leicester. Now, we've been told that there, that the building was good enough for the library for two years. I can't imagine that it's gonna fall down in the next year or two. So, we will take financial responsibility, we have, we can get grants, we can get donations. Just this weekend, because we were, we knew we were coming here, and we talked, talking about the financial aspect, I put out a, a call for our mem- just for my, our members, to see if I could get any pledges toward the museum. And I got fourteen hundred dollars just this weekend. Now, that's not a grant, I know that we can get grants that will pay a good portion of the, the utilities and so forth for the year. We've just touched the surface of the iceberg with, with asking for pledges. There are many places we can go to ask for money, we can hold fundraising events, we can do all sorts of things to raise the money needed to ru- to run the ma- the, the museum. If we are allowed to give it a try, you have really nothing to lose, because we'll pay the, all of, all of the bills this year. If at the end of the year, we don't think we can do it for the next year, you can take the building back, and you've lost nothing. So, we are willing to do that, and I think that the, the town really ought to consider that. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
If I may?
Yes, you may.
So, so, one of the things is, if, if something is falling apart in the building, you're a, are you able to get volunteers to fix that? Because you're your own society, I, I think you, we had a different answer, because it was a town building, but we don't know if that was right, we're waiting for that answer for that.
I have.
So, from your history, from your other people that have a town building.
I, I have another organization that I founded that is historical societies from all over the central portion of Massachusetts. And I've been canvassing them, asking, how does it work in your town with your museum? None of the people that have museums in their town go to the town for mi- for help doing a re- a major repair or anything else. They always use volunteer help, they have members or know of members who can get a discount on the product, and they have people who put it in for them. So, we will, we will accept the responsibility for anything financial for the term of the lease.
Good, yeah, thank you.
So, with that comment, all right, where you're gonna accept all the financial responsibilities, and believe me, I'd like to see it stay open, but I also have to look out for the towns also. Do you have liability insurance for the people that, because being a town building, I'm probably not gonna phrase this right, but being a town building, if you have Brian go in and volunteer to, I don't know, put a two by four up, and he twisted his ankle, okay, now he's out, who takes care of him?
Well, obviously, we don't have liability insurance now, because we have nothing to rely before.
Okay.
If we had the building, we would be looking into getting the necessary insurance and so forth.
How does that work, David?
So, let's, let's go through the whole process. What, the i- the issue about, about the cost of working on the building comes from the fact that currently the town has ownership.
Right.
The town has ownership of the building. Our hands are very, very tied when it comes to that. However, if you want to do a lease arrangement, that, a lease of an indeterminate period, say three years, for instance, that would require a town meeting vote, and that would be a disposition. So, although the town would still retain oh, retain ownership, the responsibility for the building would li- would lie in the hands of the lese in a case like that. We would have to clarify just a little bit, just to make sure that we, we don't have any prevailing wage issues, and that the volunteers can work on the building, but that would be the only thing that would be left. But, the real, the real issue is, you can't, if, if it stays currently as a town of Leicester building with no lese, all, all the rules are different. You know, we have to, we have to contract, we have to pay the prevailing wage to work on the building and all that. However, I believe that if we dispose through a town meeting vote to a lease, we may have a little bit less restriction.
Look, we find that out for the next meeting, if it's illegal, and, and with, with going to town hall meeting or just giving them a lease, wouldn't it be the same thing? If I have a lease of the building, they don't.
You don't have the authority to.
Do anything.
Do, to, well, you, town meeting has to give you the authority to give them a lease.
Gotcha.
Go ahead, Sandy. So, with Hillcrest, it's a town owned building.
Yep.
We lease it to them, but we are the landlord, and we're responsible for certain maintenance that a tenant never is responsible for. Would that not still apply here, like if the boiler blew up, or the chimney is leaking?
It comes to how you write the lease.
And that's how that lease was written down there.
If you like, if you write the lease, well, and here's the difference. Hillcrest, we are collecting a lease payment. My assumption would be, and I'm just assuming, if we, if we leased it to the Historical Society, I don't think we're looking for a lease payment. What we're looking for at that particular point is for them to have practical full responsibility for the building, and if the lease is a dollar a year.
It sounds like they wouldn't do that, correct?
Yes.
Follow up question, to do that, doesn't it have to go out to bid?
That, I, no, well, what i- here comes the question, exactly.
Love these questions.
Exactly what is the Leicester Historic Society? Is it a no, is it a licensed nonprofit?
Yes.
Um, okay, that helps. Is it, it's not a, it's not a municipal agency, so you don't need anything to, to lease it to another party if they're, if they're another municipal agency. Rather than speculate, let me do a little bit more on that, because these are how these things happen, and generally, most towns either give their, the ownership to the building to the group, or they do a lease. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, to walk through the minefield and make sure that we can cover that.
And, of course, if you wanted to give us the building, we'd be willing to take it, too. I just, you know, you have that option, too.
Through, through the chair. So, if we gave, gave them the building, okay, to say, we went that route, we gave them the building.
Yep.
With the stipulation, if they found that they couldn't take care of it anymore, then it reverts back to us, they can't go sell it.
Like a first right to refuse it for a dollar or something.
Yep.
You, you got a couple things to check out.
Yeah.
Let me see. I, I, I think it'd be a great idea if they could take care of it, and not cost us anything.
Right.
As long as they can take care of it, but, you know, they have to make sure they get the insurance liabilities, for instance, in case somebody was there and got hurt, you're covered. I think that would be a great thing for us, we got the building still there, everybody's gonna be happy, and if they find that they can't make a run of it, because of different things, then it reverts back to us, and then we decide at that point what to do, whether we mothball it or put it out to the bid and sell it.
Sandy?
No, Harry first.
Harry?
So, so, with your discussions, I guess, because I know you said municipalities, not them, but if historical, our historical commission are joining forces with them. I say if, 'cause I don't know where we're at with that, because you said they couldn't be part of it, but maybe in this case, if they are part of it, it helps the process as well. So, you're just looking to that?
Right.
That's all I'm.
They'll look, we'll, we'll definitely look into that.
Okay. Sandy?
So, we met almost three months ago, has the historic commission come back? I mean, they were supposed to meet, only two of the commission went on that walkthrough. They haven't had a meeting, we need to force them to have a meeting.
They did have a meeting, and they discussed the whole, their, all their results that they had. I don't know who was, I was there. It was a historical meeting that they presented at that.
Okay.
Were you there as well?
Yes.
I think David was definitely there.
All right.
Historical commission had a meeting to discuss with their findings?
Yes, he was there.
Yeah, that, 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 that was the original meeting.
No, 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 there was another meeting after that, from the results from their walkthrough, that not a last he passed through, correct?
But they didn't vote on a recommendation to us, which is what they were supposed to do.
They did not, as to my.
I don't believe they did, no.
No.
So, can we see where they stand on it? Because the members I've talked to don't agree with what we're talking about doing tonight. So, I don't think they voted.
Not what they said in public, but.
I know.
How things can change, but it's not what they said in public.
I, I think they need to officially give us a recommendation, that's their job. It's one of the most historic buildings in town, it's their job to tell us what they recommend. And I know they don't want it torn down, and they don't want it sold. They need to make a recommendation on what they think is the best way to move forward. They're the ones with the expertise and the knowledge of how a lot of these things work.
So, with that said, would you have enough time to get everything together on this, David, for the March fourth meeting?
No.
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 'Cause they can't post a meeting in time.
Right. Okay, so what about the eighteenth?
It's gonna have to be, because, again, if, if whatever disposition article we write, we gotta, we've gotta get it in.
Correct. It has to be on the warrant.
Or we wait till the fall, so, clearly, I don't wanna see the building vacant.
Nope.
No, we don't wanna wait till the fall, 'cause you don't have to. Okay.
Just for clarification on what goes on the warrant, is the placeholder for the topic not the actual writing, correct?
That's correct.
So, we just, we could say right now that we're gonna put a placeholder regarding One Paxton Street on the warrant.
Yes, we can.
And, but what that actual disposition and motion or article would read, we can decide as we go forward. But we wanna make it pretty quick.
Okay, um, unless there wound up being nothing and you pass over it.
Right.
But generally speaking, I mean, this is, no matter what is being done here, it's begging that some sort of warrant article be written, we just have to figure out what it is.
Right.
Yes, Harry.
So, I, I, I think we should have a deadline of the eighteenth. If it doesn't work on their end, or if the board doesn't agree, it needs to go on. We need to get rid of the building, because we can't afford it. The town side can't afford it, so I think it needs to be, so as far as writing this or writing that, let's have it, on the eighteenth, we have to have something solid, personally, just to move forward on it. Maybe they take over, maybe we're selling it, whatever the, the answer is.
If I may, through the chair, in order to get it on the eighteenth, I'd have to have something by the thirteenth, by the end of the day, in order to get it in the packet for the meeting.
No.
Just take it to the general, no?
Historical. Oh, you want them to come?
That would take it back for a historical.
The, the historical, right, well, so that's the Thursday before. They usually meet on a Wednesday, so they could meet next Wednesday or the Wednesday after, and they got.
Can you get in touch with the manager, they know they need a meeting?
So, who's gonna reach out to them?
We'll call them tomorrow.
He's watching.
Okay, so it's gonna be on the eighteenth war- I mean, on the eighteenth agenda. Okay, thank you, thank you for being so patient waiting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you have anything to add, you guys?
Yeah, okay, I will.
I mean, it's stuff on you, but I know this all night trying to.
Kirk Parliament, forty-four Henchell Street. One of the things that is gonna come up to it at town meeting, when you do this, you know what you said when we got the, all that property. That building was going to stay within the town. So, how you deal with this, it's gonna be important for the society, the commission, and the rest of the community. So, I hope we can figure out how we can make this work for everybody.
I don't remember us saying that, but.
No, it wasn't, that building wasn't supposed to be sold. If that was the case, I'm sure it would've changed a lot of people's.
We can, we can, we, we can look it up, because it'll, you know, warrant that, that.
The actual discussion isn't written anywhere, we'd have to go to the recording. But what I personally said when I was on the floor arguing for it was, we would do our best not to sell it, but if we sold it, we would make sure there were deed restrictions, so the building never got torn down.
Okay.
That's what I said.
If you remember it that way, then that's good, as long as it isn't gonna be torn down.
That's the whole, I mean, the whole point was never to tear it down, and to make sure that if it got sold, it went out RFP to someone who was going to res- maintain it and restore it.
Okay.
But through the.
This is gonna be the interesting part, because we're still gonna get the building inspector in there, and if he writes it off, we're.
Well, he's not gonna write it off, but he's gonna say it's gonna cost the town too much money to keep it as a town building and maintain it. That's what I expect him to say, because of the roof, the leaks in the roof, the warped windows, the porch wood that's rotted, there's, there's a bunch of things, right? That, our budget just doesn't support it.
Agreed.
If we can do a lease, we maintain ownership, and someone else is doing all of that maintenance, I'm all for that.
Okay.
We just have to make sure it's to the right group that has the right funding upfront, to make sure that it doesn't go in further disrepair. 'Cause there's not a whole heck of a lot of time to do any fundraising to do this.
So, it, now, one should also look at the other lease that you're dealing with, because I know that they put a new roof on, a new roof on, yeah.
The town did.
I know. So, here again, if you're putting a, a burden on a society, which is rightfully so, you know, what are we doing with a money making business?
That's why they pay a fee, they cover, they pay a monthly fee. That includes covering, if it was a commercial building, what their taxes would be, they pay that.
Okay.
So, what we're talking about here is giving it to you for a do- dollar a year, and you guys doing all of the maintenance, that's the give and take, and.
Okay.
I wouldn't think you'd wanna get into a lease if you didn't know what it was gonna cost you to maintain it.
Agreed.
'Cause the building inspector won't let you open it to the public if it needs certain ma- maintenance down, down the road, right?
I, I, I agree, but we could go back again, why was the library in there for?
Well, different things have come up with the weather, so that's, I mean, some of the things up and down, right?
Yeah.
That's why we need a current assessment versus what it was two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
And if you read her report, it's.
Yeah, it's.
And if you read her report from the library from day one, it's, it's all negative as well.
Okay. So, we got that, thank you.
That's what I said, right?
Okay, next on the agenda, kaboom, grant.
No, back up, town paid, streetlights.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Dennis, we got, we're waiting for you and Rick to come back.
No, the town lights, um, streetlights.
Yeah, you can't leave yet, I need you for the town paid, streetlights discussion.
Okay.
Are you tired, Dennis?
Well, my day started about two thirty.
Yeah.
I don't know, whatever.
Whatever, okay, so, we'll talk fast, and we can get you out of here.
Go ahead, whatever.
All right, David?
Sorry, I was just looking at some. So, this is a continuation of the discussion, as, as you're aware, Madam Chair and the members of the board, there's been comments about new lights and subdivisions, et cetera. And the question really comes down to, and matter of fact, I, I have had at least one other business who contacted me, who said, well, we would like streetlights here, and that's all well and fine, but, you know, it's a matter that of getting National Grid currently to install the streetlights, which comes at a price, and then it goes on to our inventory. And, you know, the question is, looking at, you know, what the planning board's dealing with, with these type of requests, as well as the, the occasional one that I get in my office, what's the board's policy when it comes to the addition of streetlights?
The current policy was none, back to two thousand and seven or something like that. But, so, what we discussed last time, which I think is a reasonable first step, is if there's a new subdivision going in, and they're planning on it being a public road after it's all done, and if the superintendent and the police chief, or your new safety committee says that intersection needs a light, then the developer puts it in, and the town owns it afterwards, and, um, once, once the street becomes a public street. As far as streetlights within a development, this one development that they're, that's to the definitives, going to the definitives. As far as streetlights within a development, this one development that they're, that's to the definitives, going to the definitive stage, they're planning on putting, um, lights at the end of every driveway that is wired to the house. Um, so they're not streetlights, but there, there'll be lights at the end of every driveway. There are only five houses going in, and they're spread out, and there's actually two driveways on the curve in the road, so it would be lit up nicely both ways that way. My concern that I raised at their public meetings was, my neighborhood, you're the one you grew up in, all had them. Now, there aren't any, cause everybody takes them down. This one particular development, the people probably won't want them because they want, they wanna move there because it's rural, it's in the middle of the woods. They don't want any lights. But, but then you have, then you have others that are gonna be a more, maybe, if we can get the zoning changed lower, again, so we have some closer, houses closer together, they may want some versus individual lights at every driveway. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, so I haven't talked to anybody about it other than what I voiced here. But we need to give the planning board, um, some kinda direction on streetlights. One at the intersection, and I think everybody will agree that it makes sense that we own those, but what to do in the developments. And I'd like to hear Dennis's opinion.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. Mandatory. If they're putting in a new development and it's added in its section, whether it's a secondary or a main, put the streetlight in, contractor buys it, we own it afterwards. Minimal cost, it's the best deal the town's gonna get. And in the best interest of public safety, best place to lay it up. Where you start and end. You're either stopping to turn in, or you're stopping to turn out. Light them up. As for the neighborhoods, I heard the comment that night, we moved from the big city to the country to see the stars. Well, you still gonna have flights on you in Yad, you're not gonna see the stars. So, I think the big thing is they want control of the lighting. If we can work with the zoning, they don't have to be enormous streetlights. But, I know when I was a kid, you went out in Don Agus trick-or-treating, there wasn't a house without a light on. They had the porch light on, they had the driveway lights on. There were people out there with pumpkins and flashlights and everything. Same thing, that, that doesn't change. So, if they're a small decorative owned by the property, they're on when they want them. They're off when they don't. It should be good to see.
They were talking about forcing them to be on a time, fixed timer that the people can't get at.
No, no one's gonna tell me to put my lights on. I got three of them going on my driveway.
Right, so.
If I think they're needed, you put them on. And, and you.
Right. But I grew up in a neighborhood that had streetlights in the center. But at what point do we allow, say that we will, when they turn the street over, I mean, this one's only five houses. It's the one off of Baldwin's, off of, right? So, but if there's another one that could be coming, that will be twenty houses, does that one need real streetlights? And would the town take them over when the public, when the street becomes public? Because we put four streetlights in there because it was, you know, half, three quarters of a mile long.
As far as the intersections, I stand firm on that, and I think the chief also does, chief of police. It, it should be in, it's up the zoning, it, it, it's, should be a requirement, no option. As for the neighborhoods, I'm kinda mixed on that. I, I, I just.
You gotta remember back when they, when they first did.
How fast are you going that you're gonna have to require four streetlights in front of five houses?
Well, no, I'm talking the bigger developments, like another Virginia Drive.
Yes.
Could, could you take and, you know, put the streetlight in and have it deeded to, you know, say, two houses?
No, you can't.
No, it can only go to an association. National Grid, we've already been down that. National Grid won't let individuals own it. An association can, you pay the bill?
I paid the bill. You wanna see it? And National Grid comes up and changes the bulb when it burns out.
I thought they were all canceled.
No, I get.
I, I believe you because.
For transfers where it's municipally applied, I don't know.
So.
We would have, we will reach out to National Grid. I know it used to be a practice where you could basically adopt a streetlight.
That was a long time ago.
But I'm not sure, I'm not sure that they're allowing it now, so.
Kevin Missigar looked into it and the answer back was no. And.
Well, we'll ask.
But we'll ask again, because right now, the planning board's going by the two thousand four or seven vote of our board that no more streetlights. So.
So, I got a question on that.
Sorry, before you go there. Public, private, through the chair, public, private ways? I thought the town planning board was getting away from public ways.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Nope, there's, just the streetlights on them.
Sorry to have.
Okay, hold on. So, having, I'm gonna use the four homes that you mentioned. Having the four homes on the street, when they design the houses, why can't have the one at the intersection, which I wholeheartedly agree with, on any intersection? Okay? But why couldn't, this is a brand-new development, why can't they, um, when they develop Harry's house, all right, have a light at the end of what, the end of his property, on his property, that is hooked into his house?
That's what they're doing.
Okay, so, so.
On the smaller ones.
Yeah, on the smaller, honestly, I'm talking with that.
Bigger developments.
Why can't we do it with all of them and everybody pays their own? I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Through the chair?
Hold on, Harry first, then you.
So, so exactly what you're saying, if, if everybody has a streetlight, so we have a streetlight on our street.
Yep.
Up by the pole.
Yep.
It was out for ten days. And my neighbor across the street has a pole outside the bottom of his house, a driveway, and he didn't, he doesn't really use it. Once in a while, he'll use it. He had it on every night. We could see. So, that does work. The only problem is, he doesn't have to turn that on.
Right.
At least for safety reasons, that light was in. Now, I can see.
Right.
And, and with that, the, um, these energy savings that we're gonna save anyways, and I think that's maybe why this came up.
That's what, it, back then, they were the really energy.
Metal high light.
Yeah, expensive to run, where these new LED lights are a lot less. So, if you have a developer put four lights in, you know, who knows, who knows, twenty, twenty houses and it's, it says you need four lights here, let them pay for everything, let them put everything in there. Without light, obviously, they pay for it. And then we maintain it, we pay the electric bill. What, what's each light cost per year?
Yeah, you're supposed to check that for us.
No, there was an amount. He gave it to us once.
Yeah.
It's re, maybe it was on our, that's okay, well, I didn't.
It was for adding each streetlight, that's now.
That's now. That's now's price. So, it's like.
Not the LED price.
Not the LEDs.
We, we don't have, we don't have an estimate on the LEDs until we put.
But it's a lot less. So, I think that we should take over or think about having a policy, to have planning board put lights in these developments that are bigger, and, and we take over the lights. I think that's public safety for everybody.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get, what was the cost per light?
Today, it's a hundred dollars for today's lights, not the LEDs.
I'm afraid we're trying to shoot mine out.
Brian, you're killing me tonight.
You were talking about, Rick was talking about a pole that he owns, St. Joseph's Church owns one as well.
Yep.
That the light goes out, you, you call Mass Electric, uh, National Grid, whatever it's called today, and they, they do change the bulb. And it's, um, you know, he pays a six dollar a month, whatever, for the pole. So, it's a rental fee maybe or something. That's how it works through the church.
That's what we pay in the town, same thing.
Yeah.
So, and the reason why they had that way back is because the town, and I remember this, the town was, didn't have enough money to afford the lights, and so they shut the lights off. I don't know if you remember that one.
Didn't have enough money?
Yeah.
The electric budget.
Remember that? Okay?
Again, nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed. We're doing the same thing. You know, and so what happened is National Grid gave the town people the option to adopt, um, a light. I mean, then, I don't know what happened after that.
Someone got killed, hit him on Main Street, so they turned them all back on.
Right, but that's not what I was gonna, I was gonna say, that I don't know what happened as far as National Grid, where, where people can't adopt a light anymore. And that's where you come in to find that out.
That's where we'll find out.
Because I know that was the reason, is because the town couldn't afford them. They had, there was a whole big thing on that. They had it advertised and everything, adopt the light.
Yep, well, we'll get to it. Yeah, I'm with you now.
Anything else?
Well, not.
Thank you.
Anything else, so I can, Dennis, go home.
Maybe we should do it, adopt a highway laborer.
Yeah.
It doesn't go? Seven, two and a half of that.
I have a former career in corrections. I know I can get a lot of guys out of work. I know you wanna go out, but probably not to my standards.
Go home. Next, next on the agenda, Kaboom Grant, vote to authorize town administrator to sign.
On the streetlight.
Document?
Kaboom.
They wear it back to more information.
Okay.
He's back to information.
And it will be, include both parts, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I've been, Kaboom has actually got it back to us. They called me on Thursday, and, um, they need an authorization for signature. I had already submitted all the paperwork. My name is on it. If, I just need a vote of the board to give.
You just need us to ratify it.
Certainly.
Second?
Third.
Oh, my God, second, third, and fourth. Okay, all those in favor?
Free money, we're in for it, it's free money.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Done, David?
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Memorial School disposition discussion.
As you know, Madam Chair and the rest of the board, the school committee has voted to turn back the building to the town. I believe it's effective August thirty-first. Um, we will then be owning Memorial School.
So, is that paid off yet?
No.
And so, what I would like for our next discussion, because we know we're gonna have a discussion, but it's gonna continue, I wanna know how much money is left on that school that now the town is gonna eat.
Okay, this, this is a multi-faceted issue.
I knew it.
In two thousand and twelve, for reasons that I can't quite fully understand, understand or explain, the town took a thirty-year USDA note on, not the boilers at Memorial, but boiler system.
Not, not boiler system, if I may correct you.
Feel, please feel free.
Just condensate return lines and condensate pumps.
And that is forty-six thousand.
Condensate return lines and, and steam, uh, traps.
I didn't know that.
The remaining debt was for the middle, for the middle school roof. So, at some point, looking at where we are now, we may have to be retiring both debts, depending on what happens. But for the purpose of Memorial, you're talking that forty-six thousand dollar USDA debt. The interesting part of it is it's not separated anywhere in the paperwork.
Bob Reed.
So, I, I, so, I don't know if we'd actually fully have to retire it, because most of the debt is the middle school roof, which we will have to deal with at that point.
And, and, and if, if and when we, we will, if and when the new school gets put up, okay, that's another debt that we're gonna have to eat.
That is, that would go in, the way you would do that is, and this is, once again, we're getting into conjecture at this particular.
I know, I know.
Um, you would have to retire that debt. So, when you retire that debt, at least in my opinion, that becomes a project cost that we would be solely responsible for. So, right now, as it sa, as it says, that thirty-year USDA note was done inside the debt limit. It didn't go out to two and a half. They didn't do a debt exclusion on it, which is probably the why they did a thirty-year. Now that you're taking, you know, theoretically, if you wind up taking the building down, now you've got four hundred thousand dollars worth of debt that you have to pay on that note. That would be part of the overall project cost, in my opinion. I don't see why you would bring it back in and try, and do a borrowing for some, for an asset that doesn't exist anymore.
Go ahead, Harry.
So, I have a better, I have a better plan than that.
Okay.
Even we have a building. We don't wanna be landlords, just like the, the museum. We want somebody else to take care of it. I know we have your request and we're a landlord there. But the disposition of this is, we need to RFP ASAP to either sell or decide what we're gonna do with this, like now. We can't wait another day. This has to be done sooner than later. Um, sell it, whatever it's worth, you get your money, you pay these loans off, it's done. That pays off the loan you got, and it's done. We don't worry about loan borrowing out and adding to this, because if it doesn't happen, let's pay some loans off with it. Just like we did with the central office, we put that fifty grand towards the second floor. I know it wasn't enough, but at least we put that money towards the second floor to, to move them up here, remodel that. Well, it ended up being forty grand, correct, if you wanna get technical, but we sold it for fifty grand.
Go ahead, Sandy.
So, it's USDA loan. Can we pay it off? They won't restructure, uh, other debts.
There you go.
Generally, in the case of the fact that the, the asset is disappearing, they will allow you to pay it off, because they don't, they don't have a project anymore. It's, it's required that you pay it off.
But they're usually bonds, so you gotta pay extra, you have to pay the full amount with the full thirty-year interest when you pay it off.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to pay that, yes.
Okay, so it's with the, yeah, that's. Yep, which is not the, where the sewer district needs to restructure so they can keep paying, but to pay one off, you pay it off with all the extra interest.
We, 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 we would be in touch with the USDA. We would certainly would do our best to negotiate that, but, you know, we're gonna pay a lot of interest on it, no doubt about it.
So, at Memorial School, sorry, through the chair, there are solar panels that have to be either renegotiated or something, that whole lease process that, or contract we have. The highway department's repeater and antenna are up there. They will have to be relocated. Um, those are additional costs. Do we pass those on to the schools as part of their building project?
Uh, to be honest, when it comes to the.
If you wanna go there.
When it comes to the solar project, who, was that the schools? Who, who put the, who put the panels on in the first place?
The schools.
Schools. Do they definitely have them there?
Yes, to cut their electric bill.
We, we'd have to look at.
Although they're definitely.
No, they're, they are, they are.
No, no, no.
No, no, I'm gonna have to look, because I hate to, I figure out what would happen in that. Is, where they, did the pan, did they lease space?
Did the school buy them in the first place?
No, it's a contract.
Company that's true, that's on the roof, cause, uh, certain people didn't read the contract properly for the high school. It's the same project.
Oh, those people.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, and the schools use the credits from that to reduce their electric bill and their budget. So, they're gonna lose those, their, their electric budget's gonna go up.
I know there's a lot, I'm sorry.
Well, they'll, they won't have the electricity from that sewer too, but.
Okay, nobody's talking. All right?
I make a motion, we go past ten o'clock for our meeting?
Thank you. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, you can talk, sorry.
I, I think we need to, hey, you weren't here last meeting, you suck it up, Mike.
All right, you get that? Boye, one day. You go past ten o'clock.
Three to two.
I said, four, okay, one day. Oh, both of us made it? Three and two, Jesus. Get ready, yeah.
But, but I think, like, some of the talk, we've asked you a few questions, so hopefully you can get those answers for us. But what are, what are your thoughts? What should we be doing with this? Cause we need to, this needs to keep going. We don't wanna be a landlord with this. August is gonna be here before we know it.
I think we need to get some information from David. My opinion, you guys can give your own opinion, um, I wanna know exactly what we're gonna pay back to USDA with the interest. I wanna know what's gonna happen with the solar panels. Is the town gonna be responsible for? Is the school, I don't, I don't know.
But keep, but keep in mind, either way, we still own the building as of August thirtieth.
I know.
Okay, I just, yeah.
I know.
What do we owe, what's at work?
That's what I'm saying.
We need to.
What do we owe, what is at work?
That's what we need to find out.
I think we need, you know.
Before we can.
An evaluation of it by a commercial realtor, um, what options can go in there. Rick gives, construction probably has, you know, can contribute some ideas, Harry's idea of condos and, or to the collaborative. I know the schools weren't real interested in pursuing that, and we can't. I know the schools weren't real interested in pursuing that, and we can't force them, can we go to the collaborative? Without the schools?
Harry?
So, a- actually, through the chair.
Harry?
Yes.
You?
Um, so Marilyn has gone to Central West, was it SEWAC, Central?
SWAC.
SWAC, S W A.
Mm-hmm. Cent, yeah.
South Worcester Collaborative.
Consortium, Southern.
Um, she has gone to him, I don't know if she's gotten an answer, maybe you could follow up with her?
Yep.
To, uh, let her know that, what we are, at least talking about it, we need to talk about it sooner than later. And we can't wait for the collaborative to decide if they, if they want, you know, to come in. I mean, if that, the, the collaborative, I don't know if I mentioned it, I made it, but the collaborative, I think is a great idea with, um, s- what town did I say, was Swamp?
Athol?
Swanski, Swamp, Swamp.
Swansea.
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 Swan, one of those S words.
Swansea, that's where.
I think that guy that follows the, uh, Things Against Us is from that town. But what they did is they, they gave the, gave the building triple net to their collaborative. And then, we, we, we'd still be able to use the fields, which would be kinda nice, you know, you don't have to get rid of the fields. And, um, all our special ed children would be able to go to that collaborative for free. And that's the arrangement they have, doesn't mean this would be the same. But it's worth exploring, because it's happened elsewhere. So, and we have a lot of kids that are around the district that would save a lot of money, so. If we could follow up, that'd be great.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Well, you gotta take, take a look, and like Harry said, all those different things, what we're gonna do with someone or whatever. Bottom line is, okay, if nothing pans out, you gotta come up with a plan so that we can mothball it for the winter. You know, it's gonna be August, but we're running out of time. And if we still own it, we give them mothball, that means they're going in and draining everything, or you gotta keep it running. So, we gotta look at the cost of that. Number two is. Break out a piece of it, put a cell tower, call Verizon. Rent it out, lease it out.
Yeah, but that'll.
That'll hurt the sale of the building.
Yeah, that'll ruin your future sale.
Not if it's in the northwest corner.
That's right.
Away from the building.
Put it away from the building.
You know, just take fifty square feet, put it over there that says already a water tank on it, so.
Something else to look at, David.
Oh, to put the panels on?
But, you definitely have to look at mothball in case something doesn't.
Verizon cell tower.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's gonna be an expense, because you gotta make sure it's done right to make sure all the questions.
And let's hope we get rid of it before then.
Well.
That's why we need to work on it now, I, I think I've asked the question, can we put an RFP out tomorrow? And the answer is yes, I mean, we have to vote on town hall floor, but we can at least get motivation on something. So I think that's where we, that's where we're starting tonight.
We can put an RFP out before the town votes for what we can do with it?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a RFI, right?
You, you, what you do, you, you put, you put, you put in our, you can put an RFP out. And just say that, one of the terms, it's subject to successful disposition, you know, voted town, on town hall floor.
So this is definitely an article on the warrant.
Yeah.
Right.
Has to be.
We don't have any other municipal purpose for it, so, um.
I said that. Except he doesn't wanna go through another whole elevator project.
Yeah, but we're, we're on one floor.
Or two. Upstairs.
Sorry, sorry, as much as, as much as this building drives me crazy, we're, we're, we're in too far at this point. It is what it is.
Harry?
Um, so, is there a way of finding out what other, um, communities have done to get housing out of that? I mean, um, I know that low income housing from state to feds or something, do they, do they maybe come in and make apartments out of it? Is there org- organizations that come in and do that, that we could look into and how to look into it?
So. I have some experience with this, generally, what, what, what has happened is, for instance. Um, the one that I work with had to do with a school from nineteen oh two. Wood frame building, uh, vacant for years. Um, there was an, a, a local nonprofit that was already operating housing in town, and they wanted to take over that. Um, the town sold it to them for a hundred thousand dollars, which we then used for scholarship money. 'Cause it was a being a former school. And what the, what, uh, what they did is they fully rehabbed it, and they got investors to do it. Because if, they, they basic, you basically get historic rehabilitation credits to restore old buildings. And it fit, it fit the criteria, so they could do it. And they, they, they've done very well, and the building is just about open. Now, conversely, there's a middle school in the same town, can't do a darn thing with it. Because the issue that it had was the way it was built. Aside from the fact that it had been added on to a couple of times, so it kinda meandered around. The real issue that got in the way of the, was it, was the fact that there was not enough outside windows. To make, make the, you know, proposed classrooms into apartments. Because you'd have some areas that had no windows, and you can't have that, obviously.
Is that middle school a historical building?
Uh, no.
Okay, so ours is probably not a historical building.
That one was a regular, but they would've gotten the credits to rehab it anyway. But the ki, the killer is, you cannot really do extensive work to the outside of the building. It doesn't matter whether it's historic or not, when you're repurposing a building. If you have to, if you have to fundamentally change the outside by adding windows, you won't get the credits. Without the credits, the investors won't invest.
As we talked about, all the classrooms have windows all around the outskirts, so that, this would be a good, probably a good building for that scenario, what you're saying.
Right, but you need to find, you need to find the interest in development.
Where we find, that's what I'm asking, how, who do we, CMRBC help us with that, or who, what agency could help us with that?
Archap solutions? D J Rural Housing?
I mean, CMRPC is, is doing royal, um, um, housing, they got a whole thing coming up on housing.
Yeah, it's, coming after that three month meeting.
It's gonna, it's gonna be at the, um, Chelten Manor, no, not Chelten Manor, the Overlook.
The Mrs. Place, Overlook, yeah.
Overlook. And they're gonna have a whole, um, session on that, so, that would be good for.
Might just, maybe look into some of these agencies to see if there is something there that we could get somebody in here, you know?
So, the question, the, the question comes down to, is how do you want to, to develop this? Are you basically looking for an off taker? So, you know, it's one difference, if you're looking to basically liquidate it, get some money back. And hopefully they'll do something that's good, that's one thing. You know, we're getting rid of a liability. If you wanna control what it is, now you're, you're, you're dealing with something totally different. So, you know, we have this discuss, we've had this discussion before. Do you wanna, let's assume, let's assume we're just talking about a complete disposition, one way or the other. Are you looking just to dispose of it, or are you looking to control and make it into something?
You asking that question?
That's what I'm asking.
So my answer is, let's get some answers, and we can figure that out, and that's what we're talking about tonight for. So, yeah, I would say, let's get rid of it, personally, I'm not speaking for the board, let's get rid of it. But if it is something in the housing that we can do housing with, with one of these agencies, where we'd still get our piece, and would get taxes, et cetera, from it. Then I think that's a win-win as well. Obviously, we have no money to do anything with it anyways, we, we don't even have enough money to legalize the building, never mind anything else at this point, I mean.
Right.
That's the reality of it.
And, and the other thing that, um, I would be interested in is finding out, are we responsible for the solar panels because we're breaking another contract?
Well, we aren't schools.
Uh, well, it doesn't matter.
You know what?
We signed, they can't, we signed it.
That solar, that solar company screwed us, here's a payback for them, take your solar panels off, you sold the building.
Well, I, well.
I know, it sounds that easy, but I know it isn't.
It's not that easy, that's what I'm saying, so we need, we need to know that.
That's how much that makes.
And find out what it's gonna cost the town. Because now they, it's, it's in our lap.
Well, again, if you sell the building, you add up the, the solar, you add up whatever it costs to maintain it until we can sell it. You add up everything in, in the loans, and hopefully you get that amount of money for it and pay everything off.
No, that'd be great, I have no problem with that.
I would like to make something more.
No, obviously, we would, but we still have that stuff lingering over.
But that's what, that's.
Yeah, we have to get that at a minimum.
Right. And that's why we're, we're trying to tell you, David, we need to know what it's actually, what we owe on it, and can we make what we owe on it back?
Remember, remembering the fact that if you're especially looking at a rehab project. If you wanna, if you want, if, if you're, if you wanna maintain control of the fields, for instance, that are up there. That's one consideration. Remember, people, anybody who, anybody who does this is buying something as a raw material that's gonna turn into something totally different. I would not expect to see a big payback on, on a deal like that, just because they're gonna rehab the whole thing.
Oh, we have to explore it.
Absolutely, but I, I wanna make sure that we understand that there, there's not gonna be a lot of cash coming out of this, no matter what is chosen. It's really more of getting rid of the liability before it becomes one.
What did you mean by the fields, I'm sorry?
Size of the school, Chris.
What did you mean by the fields?
Okay, so you have fields, there's fields that go with that parcel. If you're selling the building, are you selling the property, including those fields?
Right.
Not my interest, if we're getting rid of it, we get rid of it all, I mean.
Uh, except for the spectrum for the cell tower.
Right. Can we find out how many acres are up there?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be nice to know.
Well, that's kinda hard, because it's gonna include the whole damn slope.
Doesn't matter, it should be, it should be on the card, it should be on the SS's card, how many acres are there?
Yeah, but the slope is useless, we wouldn't need the.
Be a good solar field.
Some nice developer could put a big wallet.
Yeah, that could be the last one that they, they approve.
The, the other thing, David, is, this is all well and good and everything, um, but on the other hand. No matter what we do with it, okay, we still have to take under consideration that we have people that meet up there for the Memorial Day parade. And we would have to find a place.
But somewhere else.
No, seriously, I know nobody thinks of these things, it might sound stupid, 'cause I do, but.
Yeah, no, you're, good point.
We have to take that under consideration, we can't just turn around and, 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 I mean, if we get rid of it tomorrow, I would appreciate it, okay? But we still have to have a plan for the other people that actually go up there. Especially the ones that use the fields and stuff, you know?
Uh, I heard, there's also a practice field.
I was at boxing recs, and, um, the soccer league was there, the president, or, there's all new people in the soccer league. So I don't know if he was president or not, but, um, they did ask what's going on with it, and I says, you know, I don't know. But as far as I'm concerned, if we're selling him, we're selling it, and if we can do something else with the building and keep the fields, we'd wanna keep the fields, just for everybody to use them, but I wouldn't count on it.
Harry, through the chair?
Yes.
Harry, my wife wants to know what you're doing with her forty thousand dollar playground.
Oh, yeah. I've heard a few comments about that.
She raised a red diamond in that place.
So. Memorial, yeah.
Yep, forty thousand dollars.
So, I don't know what I'm doing with it, but I heard the school was, could possibly move it over to the preschoolers down on, uh, at the high school, since they moved the preschool to high school. I know that was a conversation, but. I don't know.
Okay, well, your job is to get us some information.
How about we add that to the, the cost of the, uh, building?
You're gonna add that to the cost, so there's another forty thousand for the playground?
Yeah. It'd be so nice.
Well, at least the cost to move it.
Personally, ten thousand of my own money went into that, so, you know, I didn't have any chance.
Really?
That's a life was good.
Yeah, when you're, when you're chairman of the committee, you end up donating most of the money.
Okay, we take that one to death. All right, but it's very important, because this is a, a big step for the town also.
We're actually gonna have to beat that every meeting now.
Every meeting until we come down to a, a, a solution. All right, next, next on the, uh, agenda are the minutes for January twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen, and February eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, what's the board's pleasure?
Second, third.
Are we doing both of them, yes?
Yeah.
I'm good, I'm good with that as well.
Okay. All those in favor to accept, uh, January twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen, and February eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, that was unanimous?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Nay.
All those. All those in favor?
My rip back me.
No, everyone.
Rock still schools, condos, no.
Are they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what they're, I was wondering what.
But that was by a private owner, wasn't it? Yeah, 'cause we sold that.
We sold it, a developer did it and sold.